I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we get started, I'd like to ask the council if I can move item number nine to the front. Okay, and we agree it?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you. Start this off. Everyone, please silence your cell phones if you would please. This meeting details have been placed on the agenda to allow council member staff and the public to participate in the meeting teleconference in pursuit of the governor's executive order nine twenty-nine. We have limited access to the chambers, which we pretty much fill them up, which is good. Masked physical distancing will be strongly encouraged, but not required at this point. Members of the public may remotely listen to the participate in the meeting via teleconference. If you wish to listen to participate in the meeting through teleconference, simply dial the meeting number below. During this call, you may press star nine to raise your hand, ask this to speak during the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. Public comments, this is time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take no action in the comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare or place on a future agenda item. If you're here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is a time, please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium, state your name, billing address, so that the city staff can respond to you in large this comment, or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not require to do so. So do we have some public comments? I think we do. Yes, sir.
Guess you were looking at us, huh? Well, thank you. Please sit here for a second. We've got a booby prize. Yes. First off, my name is Mike Rose. I'm the general manager of the Rain Rock Casino, which is owned and operated by the Karuk tribe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and members of the community. We're here tonight to announce something very exciting for the Karuk tribe and Rain Rock Casino. With me tonight is Gary Perry. He's a member of the Karuk tribal gaming authorities, even though he thinks he's retired, he still works. You'll know what that's like in a little while. Yes, and on the phone this evening, we have Josh Saxon, who is the executive director of the Karuk tribe. And also with him is Daryl Aubrey, the director of self-governance for the Karuk tribe. So I'd like to ask if Josh has a few words to say, if we could unmute him and see if he's got something to say.
Yo, what's up, Mike? Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and members of the Waireka community. I just want to say, yo, thank you for giving us this opportunity to share exciting news. I also want to apologize on behalf of Daryl, myself, and the tribal council. We're currently out of town, participating in an annual planning session, so we're not able to be there in person. Before Mike goes into the details, Gary Peary, a member of our tribal gaming authority, has a special recognition to make. Yo.
Thank you, Josh. And try to understand you're retiring. Anybody else here?
Your legal side now, so.
Oh, as Mike said, I'm a member of the gaming authority of the Karuk tribe, Rain Rock Casino. And proud to be one. And Eric Snipes represents in person the tribe, the people who work at the casino. About a hundred and forty of them. And they wish to give a special recognition to you, Steve. As you can see, it's retired, enjoy the next chapter in life, lawn service or whatever. We just wanted to say thank you for all the introduction, the community, the people of the community, and the Karuk tribe in general. You've always been a fair negotiator, hard but fair. Respectful and kind. And with the community's best interests at heart. And just a word to the council, I've been born and raised here, keep applying something like you. We're out. Recruit. As a small token of our appreciation and respect, especially the respect part, it's hard earned. Please accept this one, your final papers.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. There it is. Thank you, Gary, and again, Steve, on behalf of all the team members who work at Rain Rock and especially the tribe, we really appreciate all your years of service. And Gary was correct, you were always a very fair and cordial negotiator, and I think you work in everybody's best interest. And we truly appreciate that and respect you for all your hard work with that. But that's not why we're really here. Even though it's a good reason to be here. As most of you may remember, back on April fourteenth of two thousand and eighteen, the Karuk tribe opened phase one of the Rain Rock Casino. The casino has been widely successful by employing hundreds of team members from our local community. Just three years and sixty-two days later, I am pleased to announce that the Karuk tribe will begin design and building of phase two of the Rain Rock Casino. I have a couple of renderings here.
They're kind of tough.
But, oh. You can be better for me. As some of you may know, our present casino, which is located right here off of this nice baseball field we've come up here, and that's our present casino. The expansion, which will be, which is outlined in our IGA with the city, we have an IGA with the city on. You've got to turn it around.
Upside down, Jen.
Okay, upside down.
There we go. You're fired.
I tell you, I'm not good at this.
All of our expansion will be south of our present casino that we have now. It's a parking lot right now, if you know where that is. But let me explain to you what it will include. First off, it's all part of our IGA that we worked out with the city. It will include an eighty-room, three-and-a-half-star hotel, which will also include fifteen thousand square feet, okay, of a beautifully landscaped garden area surrounding the hotel with an outdoor pool, including fire pits, hot tubs, and waterfalls. That will be our signature part. To give you an idea of fifteen thousand square feet, if you've ever been inside of a Rain Rock Casino, the casino itself is only fifteen thousand square feet. So just the grounds that we're going to landscape internally will be the size of the present casino. So the tribe has been no, is holding back nothing in reference to that. On top of that, we will be increasing our gaming space, okay, with a large non-smoking area, okay, for our people. We'll also have four thousand square feet. And this kind of gives you an idea, this is our present casino, I'm sorry. This will be the addition, hotel lobby, and our entire hotel area around there. It's about sixty-eight rooms and twelve cottages circling the pool area and the fifteen thousand square feet of lush landscaping that we will have there. We will have four thousand square feet of seating and banquet space inside the facility, which will be some of the largest space that the area has had, will be, it'll handle some small events, some concerts, and also be a case, a place that if we ever have any need for emergency services, that's a place that people can come to and take care of. But we do have a emergency event area for the entire facility. On top of that, we'll be expanding our food and beverage operation, okay, which will include a little bit more food and beverage, but we'll also be getting ready for sports betting and a sport pool at the same time, because we believe that will come into place. All this will help make Rain Rock Casino a true resort and truly a regional destination resort for the city of Waireka. And that's our goal here, we'll be employing more people, but our goal is to make ourselves more of a regional destination, so people will come into our lovely communities and enjoy all the benefits of that. With that, I'll ask Daryl, Daryl, are you on the phone?
I sure am.
If you have anything you'd like to add.
Yeah, hello, my name's Daryl Aubrey. I'm the self-government director for the Karuk tribe, and I've been working as self-government director here now for about a year. I just wanted to add that once phase two is complete, which we expect should be the end of two thousand and twenty-two or the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three, we'll also be increasing our team member staff by over fifty. We believe this will be a wonderful addition to the tribe and the city of Waireka, and we look forward to continuing to strengthen our government-to-government relationships in the future. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Yo, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council, not you anymore. You don't have to be nice to the team, is that correct? Okay, or members of the community not including Steve, Josh, Daryl, Gary, or myself would be happy to answer any quick questions, if that's okay with Mr. Mayor. So does anybody have any questions? Yes?
I love the idea of gardening waterfalls, but I'm wondering about the current water shortage.
We'll be using, I'll answer that question very quickly. We're looking at doing some iron and astroturf in our greenery area. Okay, we will have a pool and we'll have some of that, but some of our lush landscaping, we're looking to use some minimal water and/or use astroturf wherever we possibly can, so we don't utilize the water issue that is not today, that'll be with us for years to come. So we are very sensitive to that.
Are you looking to recycle the wastewater from the casino with our child? Do you use that for the water features?
Well, all that right now goes into the city sewer system, so we, it's not, we don't have our own wastewater treatment plant, so we can't do that right now. Wouldn't be treated. It wouldn't be treated, it would be wasted. But that's very, but that's why we're looking at some of the other alternatives, but we don't have the people at work. We're very sensitive to that. Is there any other questions that I might be able to answer for anybody? Be happy to answer anything, and if you don't have questions today, okay, we'd be happy to answer them at any time. Well, this is open to the public now, I mean, no big secret about it. We're moving forward with it, the tribe's very excited about it. And we are committed to it, our architects are working on designs right now. And once we have rendering done, we will come back and show you our renders, what the building will look like. So everybody gets a good idea of what it looks like coming from the highway and stuff like that. But if anybody's input or thoughts, again, my name is Mike Rose, or you could ask Daryl or Josh, we'd be happy to hear any thoughts or ideas coming from the community, because, you know, we look at a great partnership, and it's important that you guys have input and can help us out wherever possible. And if you know more team members, employees, we'll take them, so you don't have to retire, you're kind of part of us.
Mike, when do you plan on doing the groundbreaking?
We'll groundbreak, but if all goes well weather-wise, we're looking to break ground the third quarter of this year. We're waiting for, we're not going to break ground until all of our architectural drawings are done. So that way, we can get some really good cost on the construction, as you well know. Yeah. We're seeing a rain out of bills, okay, because it's so expensive. So we want to make sure we have all those numbers in line, and then we'll move forward with it. But we'll look to do some groundbreaking in mid-third quarter or early fourth quarter.
It's gonna take about, what, nine months to do, or?
Uh, anywhere from nine to twelve. Again, once again, it's gonna have, a lot will depend on the weather.
Yeah.
Because at a certain point, we can move dirt, but we're not gonna pave and do other things in the middle of the winter. So if it means that it makes it more sense for us to wait a month or two, the tribe will wait a month or two to do it right. But we, you will see some closure of some areas by the third quarter of this year, so we can get things prepped and ready to go.
Awesome. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many team members are you looking to be adding?
As Daryl said, fifty, okay, fifty, maybe sixty, depending on everything. It is going to be a challenge for us, but we do believe that adding the total amenity of a regional destination will hopefully draw some people from out of the market into our area. Which will then put some more packing issues on our housing and our rental pool in our fine community. But it's something that we have to do. I think the growth of the community depends on projects like this and like other projects coming into here. So we can all survive and prosper. So we will hope that this will be a catalyst for other things that happen. But we are very concerned about the, the housing part of things. The tribe is doing some things to help us, but it's a problem that I think the whole community is well aware of right now.
I guess there's one question up on the Zoom, can you bring them up, Arthur? See, hands raised.
Hello?
Hello.
This is Don Marie, can you hear me?
Yes, again, Don Marie.
Okay. Um, well, I'm calling to talk about the fencing, the fireworks, and the sound system. I'm not there because I am really hurt and I am nursing my legs. And the fencing.
Marie?
Um, yeah.
Uh, we, we're having one little presentation to finish up, can he finish up real quick and then have you ask her a question? Just hang on, just one.
Yeah.
These questions were supposed to be directed to Mike Rose and the casino, so.
That's okay. I can try to answer it, don't know. I'm finding it all fun. Steve can answer that question, I'll be there.
Do you want to come sit over here?
I definitely don't want anything. You're a part of the city council and I'm not, you're better people than me.
So is there any, any other questions for Mike?
Yes, sir. What's the percentage of Karuk Indians in the tribe itself that are employed within your organization?
About thirty-five percent of our team members are Karuk Indian, the rest are non-NIA.
Do you see any potential increase in the number of Karuk tribe members?
We work on it all the time, the Karuk, and maybe Josh would like to speak on this on behalf of the tribe. Josh, I don't know if you, you can hear that or not, but I'd be happy to unless you'd like to.
I did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The question was, how many members of the tribe work at the property? And I told him about thirty-five percent, and he said, is there any way to increase that number? And I was going into my whole spiel on it, but I thought it would be better coming from the executive director of the Karuk tribe than the guy who's running the casino.
Well, I, you know, probably say somewhat similar responses, you, Mike. We're always looking to increase tribal employment. We have a tribal employment rights office, we have a lot of vocational opportunities. We're always looking for partnerships to increase the skill set of our tribal membership. We have career fairs and those kinds of things going on as well. So there's, there's always opportunities and, and always looking to, to train folks and bring them on and, and have them be, have them contribute to the success of the casino.
So things are, yes, you know, the tribe will have a position in the government side that they, though, can employ a lot of tribal members on. Our job is wherever we possibly can, if they're unskilled, we get unskilled so they can take a position. And if they skilled, we try to put them in a position that they can, we do have preference in that world. But at the end of the day, we also want to put the right people in the right position, whether it be private or not. But we definitely look, they have preference, and we try to put the right people in that spot. Did that answer?
Thank you.
Right, anybody else? All right.
Nothing else. Josh, did you want to say anything before we get off the phone, or Daryl?
I'm good, thank you guys so much for the opportunity for us to be able to let you, let you know this good, great news.
And, and again, on behalf of everybody, thank you very much for all your hard work. I know you'll have lots of celebrations throughout, but we just wanted to take this opportunity. And then again, we'll come back when we have rendering, or then when we have a timeline for our big shovel, we'll make sure you guys are aware of it and could attend to it, if you're part of it. We truly honor our relationship with the city and the county, and we love the fact we have a great police department that takes care of us and a fire department, they're really good partners, and we can't ask for anything more than what the city gives to us. Thank you for all that you do, and I sincerely appreciate it, it's all our heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the good news.
Yes.
To find us new work team members. Does anybody need any of these? I could email them to you if you need them, but.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, we'll go back into public comments, and I guess, yes. So Arthur, you want to?
Arthur.
Arthur, would you go ahead and still public comment, so Don Marie wants to?
Yeah, she is unmuted.
Okay, okay, Don Marie.
Okay, um, so I wanted to talk about the, the fencing, fireworks, and the sound system. The fencing ordinance is absolutely crazy. If you look around the city, what they have allowed to get done recently, um, and of course, all that's going to get grandfathered in, but, you know, they knew that it was wrong to begin with. Um, I think that changing all this, and, you know, I look at my fence, and if something happens to half, to force my fence, then I've got to replace the entire thing. I, I'm not thinking that's fair. If it's grandfathered in, then I shouldn't have to go beg and beg to have it repaired. It's grandfathered in, period, even if it needs to be fixed. So that's one thing I'm very upset about. The second thing is, last year, fireworks were sold to people who are homeless and people who, you know, they have money, they don't have homes, they have money, and they started fires last year. So I'm asking the city to please not sell fireworks this year, don't allow it. You know, we can have the big huge fireworks show at the casino, that would be great, but to let people who are irresponsible have these fire incineraries in our city is ridiculous. And then the sound system, yeah, I barely can hear you guys, very gargled still. We need a new sound system instead of, instead of then spending, you know, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars on an air conditioner on a building that may or may never get used. This sound system is absolutely imperative. So I beg of you, please, use the money wiser. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don Marie. Now, is there any other public comments that's not on the agenda tonight? I'd like to use, try to keep it to our agenda, and if you have other comments that are not related to the agenda, this is a time for that public comments. Anybody else? What's that? Okay, thank you. All righty, then we are, discussed earlier, moving up number nine to the front of the line. So number nine is discussion possible action of the fireworks. Discussion the safety and hazards of the fireworks and consideration limiting sales and use. So do you want to bring on chief on this one right off the bat?
Yes.
Please.
He's coming on now.
You won't be banned either.
Oh, boy, watch out, he's got a stick.
This mayor, members of the council, guests this evening, citizens. Some time ago, it was brought forth to have a discussion about fireworks in the city. And I appreciate, you know, the fact that we're able to discuss this tonight, because it's obviously a concern to a lot of folks, and rightly so. And just so you know, in twenty-eight years of fire service and discussions I've had with fire professionals, both the county firewarden and Italian chiefs, chiefs from Dunsmere, we past chiefs, that what we're dealing with is the fact that every year, we celebrate the Fourth of July, you know, and we have fireworks, it's been around as long as we can remember. And within the city of Waireka, we've had very few instances, instances where safe and sane fireworks were misused, started fires of any consequence, whether it's grass fires, wildland fires, structural fires, things of that nature. We have had some, but I came up with five, maybe six over the last twenty-seven years that I'm aware of. There could have been some that I'm not remembering or weren't documented, because our record keeping system is, as you know, paid a little bit of money to improve that, and it's working great. So going forward, we can change that. So having those esteemed, my esteemed colleagues, if you will, weigh in on the matter, because sometimes you get blinders on, you know, you're not really looking at it the way you should. But I've always, you know, since I've been volunteer chief and now full-time chief, I devoted myself during the fireworks period, all of everything else, to try to find solutions to catch people that are doing illegal fireworks. And in conversation with Chief Mark Gilman, Chief Dimash prior to him, and Chief Bowles, going back a few years beyond behind that, it's very difficult. And that's not an excuse, it's just, it's a reality, it's a fact. Trying to catch someone in the act is difficult. So going forward, I would say that my recommendation would be to, as you can see in the staff report, to go forward with allowing safe and sane fireworks for those that have a permit in the state of California to sell safe and sane fireworks with an emphasis on public education and enforcement. The public education aspect of it, I would recommend that we come up with some flyers, and each member that has, or each vendor that has a booth that is permitted, we need to display that, so people understand the consequences if they are caught using those incorrectly. And also, it gets the word out, we would also add some purpose to the effect that use of illegal fireworks should be reported, and then we would also list the fines and penalties associated with that. And that's, as far as I can go, there's some other things we have to work out with YPD and law enforcement. Unfortunately, the fire department doesn't have, I'm not a sworn officer, I don't have the authority, direct tickets, et cetera, et cetera. So we would want to try to get to that point at some time in the future. But for now, we rely on YPD, and of course, they all know their understaff, and they're also, you know, do the best they can on that, because everybody's, we have Cal Fire when they're available. We have other departments that we invite to participate and help us with the fireworks show. And that is something is, I think, was kind of, I even forgot about it till today, but. So when we have fireworks in town, when we have the show, we have an additional seven or eight engines in town. So if something was to go awry from a firework that is, you know, causing a wildland fire, we would shut down the show immediately, dispatch to that location. So we would have more resources immediately available than we would any other time. And going a little bit further with that same thought, it's my, it's my feeling that, in my professional opinion, from experience, that the safe and sane fireworks that we have today have improved greatly, and we are probably less likely to see issues with those than we are for any other type of fire start. That's someone dragging their chains, flat tires, vehicle fires get into the wildland. So that's, that's just my personal or professional opinion. So with that, like I said, I, I counsel talked to many, many different firefighters, our staff, my officers, our department, and we all feel the same. It's just more educational. I even have some documentation that I picked up from State Farm, from the county of Los Angeles Fire Department, wherein over probably twenty, twenty-plus years, they documented that almost to ninety-five to a hundred percent of all the losses that occurred from fires, Fourth of July, were from illegal fireworks. So ones that are not safe and sane. So with that, I'll just conclude my comments, stating that that's, I think we need to focus more on enforcement and try to do more public education. I'd be happy to answer any questions, council, or the audience, my man.
So I got just one question, kind of not more of a question, but a question leading into maybe something for a future. Moving forward in on this, if we were to get to the stage, like say, before, right before the fireworks and stuff, because I'm all for the fireworks and all for everything on that, as long as we can keep it safe, obviously. Because our first and foremost is protection of our citizens, no matter what, no matter what. I don't care if you, if you're getting mad at me because we're, we get shut something down because of safety, but safety comes first, first and foremost. But here's, here's what I'm just talking, what I'm leading up to here on that, is if we got to the point the day before. the day before, whatever, we have red flag warnings, we have 100 and plus degree temperatures, you know, we have the wind blowing 20 miles an hour, like the perfect scenario that happened up at Talent and Phoenix and all that scenario. Is there something like us as a city council could say, hey, we need, we do need, for safety reasons, we need to shut this down? That would be the only thing I could ever say on something like that. We'd have to call an emergency meeting, I would assume.
Correct. I may actually be in a better position to answer that question, which is that, yes, as a city council, you could call an emergency meeting and take emergency action. You might do it, uh, with the, um, with the city attorney, with the fire chief, perhaps even the fire warden, uh, all providing you information and then putting together the findings. But if it was some event that, uh, that you needed to have, take that action, you could do that.
Okay.
And I would, um, so.
Mr. Mayor, you're talking about fireworks are gonna be shooting off at the Rain Rock Casino or the fireworks are gonna sell out the, at the fairgrounds?
I, I would be talking about all in general, everything.
Well, at that, at that point, they're all gonna be sold. I mean, I was talking about the day before, they're gonna be sold from the vendors. And so I don't see how we'd be able to.
I know, enforcement, and I, I agree, enforcement's gonna be a thing, but I, I'm looking at, I'm, I don't want to shut it down. Don't get me wrong. I'm, that's a, I've lived here too long. I love seeing this sort of thing.
I'm just buying by 24 hours in advance, a lot of people, because they go on sell wet in a few days, probably.
Right.
They're gonna be sold. So how, like you said, you can't enforce it. Their short, YPD short staff, they're gonna let them off, the ones that are sold. Yeah, you can stop the ones at the fairgrounds probably, but.
Well, like I said, I, I, that's all I look at is public, public safety first and foremost.
So we can cancel it, but they're gonna.
I don't want us to end up, I don't want us to end up like Talent and, and Phoenix just because of us not being conscientious about our actions, so.
Yeah. I, I think it's important that there is that possibility of safety valve after very high fire conditions.
Yeah. No, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm gonna say.
But just going through the, the process, remember that you also could take that into consideration.
Yeah, right, okay.
Like I said, I don't want to shut it down. That's the last thing I want to do, but I also don't want our town burned down either.
They'll, they'll still set them off. I'd say we can say, don't do it, but they're still gonna have their fireworks. They're still gonna have their parties. They're still gonna light them off. That's just.
I realize that. Yes, Jones?
Just for clarity's sake, if I may ask the chief, so it's my understanding that the state of California has very strict laws on what type of fireworks can be used. And it seems from what I've heard that the actual problems are coming from out of state and illegal fireworks. Is that true? Not the safe and sane that sold by our nonprofits here in town. Uh, those are pretty minimal. And as you said earlier, in 27 years, you have not seen anything major come out of that. So, uh, but it's my understanding with, with the larger fireworks that comes out of, say, what's happening at the casino, that that's covered, uh, by fire engines and, and there's a lot of extra work.
I actually write the permit for that.
Right.
They won't be able to do anything. In fact, I've already been in contact with them. So just so you know, not to get off track. Um, it's, it's important because I explained, vegetation's gotta be cleared to my satisfaction. And that, that is gonna be happening. Mike's gone now, so I don't. But, you know, we're gonna discuss that. And in addition to that, as Mr. Mayor pointed out, um, the possibility, if we had high winds and low humidity, um, Dave Peterson, who's generally the technician that does the shoot, I have a good relationship with him and he knows what my expectations are. And that would be if there are high winds, there will be no shelter. Because you could also have, in addition to the fire, you could have a, uh, shell go awry and land somewhere hurt elsewhere. So there's more to it and it's very, there's a very fine window there. And he's been, at times, there's been enough crease to where he was concerned. And you can postpone it or wait until that condition dies down. But you are correct. If you look at all the statistics, you will find, I'm, I'm positive, just what I found, is that illegal fireworks are the culprit of injuries, I mean, really bad injuries and they're, it's all documented, correct?
And those are out of state. Those aren't anything we have local, our nonprofits aren't gonna be selling anything like that.
Well, I don't know what you mean by, I mean, by out of state, that they're not sold at, at the, they're not allowed to be sold at these, uh, booths that are permitted by the state.
Right.
They have to have their stamps. And just so everybody knows, for those folks that are here tonight, I will be doing inspections of the booths to make sure that everything that's there is safe and sane.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, one more question regarding the flyers you want to put up in the booths. I'm hoping and trusting that you're working with staff so they can get all your thoughts.
Absolutely.
On paper and everything, but I, maybe we need to put a little footnote on it from now on regarding if it's determined that it is too hazardous to perform the fireworks, they possibly could be canceled or whatever wording you want, but make reference to that in small print.
In any instance, yes. And I, and what I've seen generally, and you're always gonna have the rogue individual, you know, unfortunately, that ruins it for other folks. But the folks that do it up in front of their house, in the grass, on the street with their kids, yeah, it might look detrimental to other people, but generally, they, they follow the rules. Um, it's the ones go up in the air and, and make the loud noises that concern us as firefighters because you can have, you can have a raging structure of fire from lands on someone hitting a tank or, you know, fires grow, they start small, grow. So there's, there's a lot of factors that play into it, but by and large, people do, it's that one chance. And believe me, I should have prefaced my original statement by saying, you know, you guys hired me, this council hired me, and I'm blessed to have a child. But my main concern is protecting the public.
And that's exactly right.
So, yeah, I mean, we all have to be, um, responsible and do the right thing. Otherwise, yeah, it would be really shitty to go no more. Especially when there's, you know, wildfires and, you know, the conditions that we've seen in the past. We don't want to have that ever. No one even get hurt. So we've been fortunate. So I think most people will obey, but they also have to be educated as to, you know, one time it can happen.
Yeah.
Consequences could be that. So that's, that's, that's all I have for it. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Yes, any other questions? Council has any questions?
I think there's people in the audience who want to say something.
So, Eric, what I might suggest is that we're gonna, um, ask the chief to go back up.
Yes.
Allow members of the public to come down and make. I will, um, whatever it is good. But I will write down if there are questions rather than having the chief answer each one.
Yes.
Or we'll, we'll hold that to the end and then you can come back up and.
Keep it simple. Awesome, thank you. Alrighty, we have some members.
Mayor Kay, councilwoman, councilmen, staff, thank you for allowing us to speak up. I just wanted to quickly present, um, you know, the significance of the revenue that's made by, I think, and a lot of us are probably all with organizations that are selling the fireworks. These are the safe and sane fireworks. Um, we sell them, it's limited till the 28th till the 4th. So you've got seven days worth of sales. This is, is all that you can do. And just, uh, having a chat, and, and Josh could clarify some of the points about, you know, the significance of it for the school, that if, you know, our, we have a private school and it's through fundraisers and donations that we are able to keep 35 children enrolled in the school and, and with, and very small tuition. So, um, so the, the, uh, with COVID restrictions, we weren't, were unable to do things like the Valentine's banquet, which was a huge thing. So because we couldn't be, um, the fireworks turned out to be, you know, just a godsend last year. And, um, we, we sold in seven days, $32,000 worth of, of fireworks. We talked to, or I talked to Don Hanson, who kind of runs the booth course, um, talked to Phantom, which is the, they've got, I think, three, that's the brand that sold at like three of the booths in town. And last year collectively, they sold $77,000. So I estimate that probably with, there's a couple other booths, some other brands that are involved. So it's probably about a hundred thousand dollars worth of these safe and sane fireworks that are sold between the 28th and the, and the 4th, which you can imagine that's, that's a really good fundraiser for, you know, organizations like ours that don't have a huge number of, of people and a short time to try and get in there and do something. And, um, in terms of, of sales tax, um, I haven't split out city from, uh, from state, uh, but, or county, but, um, that generated about, uh, uh, $8,000 worth of sales tax, you know, from the sales. Um, and when you consider that, that, that's over a seven day period, and I mean, it's, it's actually a pretty beautiful thing. Um, the, uh, so I just, you know, as you discussed this and I, and I, of course, I live in a forested area, a timbered area, and I'm very sensitive about fires, uh, and, and, you know, and I think we all are here. And probably a lot of us have lost coverage on our homes because, because of our zip code now, um, through our insurance companies. So it's, yeah, it's, I think we, we need to be safety conscious. Uh, but I think with the safe, sane fireworks, that that's not really the, you know, where our fires are coming from. I mean, the sources most of the time are something else. So if, if, um, unless there's something that really, you know, indicates that there's a real safety issue associated with these in particular, I, I can't say anything about the city's fireworks or Rain Rock's fireworks, but as far as the safe sane ones, um, it would be really, uh, uh, especially a tough blow for, uh, the, the nonprofit organizations like ours um, to try and recover from that. It would be a big hit. Uh, and, and in fact, Don Hanson just came down to get her permit. That's the last thing we have to do. We're about ready to set up our booth. And, and when we found out and she was told, well, no, you can't get a, a permit to sell until this is worked out. And, and it's like, we're, we're like on deadline right now. So, um, so it would be, you know, really helpful if we could get this, you know, some word so that we could continue on. Because we've, we've been spending money for a few months now on fireworks. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, and my address is 1118 Jackson Street.
Way up the hill.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, good evening.
Hello.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Kay, for allowing us to, uh, draw our attention and you council members as well. My name is Brian Favrell and I happen to be the chairperson for the fireworks booth for Warrick, Alex, this year. I have to say that, um, two previous speakers have really hit on pretty much all of the salient points of what we're dealing with here. And I'm, and I'm really glad to hear that some of the booths last year did so well. Pretty much everyone sold out by, uh, the morning of the 4th of July. And if you follow any of this, you'll see that I'm false, sold out, Metrude sold out, everyone sold out, okay? The, the first point I really want to make is that the fireworks that you sell in a fireworks booth today are so watered down that people that have been, uh, doing fireworks their whole life are really disappointed. It looks like a big sparkler and that's about all you get. Now, if you want to spend, uh, $79 on a, on a particular, uh, package and you get three things that go, and that's it. I mean, there's no bottle rockets anymore or any of that stuff, okay? So anecdotally, I went to about three or four different fireworks displays because we sold out and I was invited to come by. And there were, there were garden hoses everywhere. There was buckets of sand. There were adults that were really knew what they were doing in terms of keeping it safe, right? They were still upset that you couldn't really get stuff like M80s. I'm sure. But, um, you know, I just, you just gotta have to ask yourself in our society, which hair are you gonna split in terms of taking things away from us trying to have a little bit of fun, okay? And this gentleman talked about him setting up his, his booth shortly. We at the Elks had two booths and they were made of plywood and it got to the point, we were afraid they were gonna fall down around our ears, literally. And, and, uh, you know, exalted ruler, uh, Perry can, can speak to how dangerous it was setting these bloody things up. So we decided we were gonna commit to a real safe fireworks booth and we purchased a one-time use, like brand new 20-foot shipping container. And we had it all modified so that we could lock everything up at night and open the doors in the morning. That, that bill came to $5,100. So if you guys shut us down, I'm gonna have you buy our shipping container.
That's the mayor's responsibility.
Put your lawn mowers in it and lock up your fuel. You can even use it as a big shit. What, uh? Chambers where you get to go in and stay in the dark.
Yeah.
At any rate, um, this, uh, the whole idea of shutting this down, I'm gonna give you guys a notice right now, okay? If you want to do this, you better let us know by the 22nd, okay? And you better let us know early because I just got a phone call today from the shipping people of Phantom Fireworks and they said, the people say they're gonna be in your neck of the woods from, anyway, from the 22nd to the 25th. And once that drop off is there, we're on the hook for some fireworks, okay? Or you guys are on the hook for some fireworks. But we don't think that it's fair to take the heat and have it be caught, short-sheathed it here and then, oh no, sorry, you can't sell this stuff, okay? So, um, the last thing I want to ask is this. If we are into the sales period of time, who's gonna make the call on the shutdown criteria? How subjective is it gonna be? And, uh, who's gonna decide what's safe or what isn't, okay? Especially for stuff that doesn't really go boom and fly into the atmosphere like, like the Rain Rock and some of these other things. And so that's, that's the part that concerns me about who's got the, uh, compelling numbers and criteria on the 1st of July to say, you guys can't sell anymore. Because now we've got some big bills to pay after we've accepted the goods, okay? So, uh, just for clarification, the wonderful person that pulled it up for the purchase of the, um, container this year for us is a World War II veteran. His name is Dwight Roberts. And last year, we shook the whole thing down. He was in the Navy. This year, since it's been shaken down for going to Christmas, the USS White L. Roberts. LLFB 001. And you know what LLFB stands for? You guys all know what a Navy ships all have on those labels, okay? The LLFB stands for Land Lock Fireworks Booth. So you guys are on the hook. You guys, if you guys want to shut us down, you're gonna buy a container? And I think you're gonna have a whole lot of fireworks to play with on December 31st. When it's, when it's really safe. On behalf of the Warrick, Alex lines, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Matthew Aven. I'm, well, I'm not here in a capacity to watch. I am also in town, so, so such. Um, I'm, I'm here talking about the fireworks because there's some, there's been some concerns about this potential prohibition of, of the safe and sane fireworks. And that is, if the concern of safety, of fireworks hazards in city is what the fire chief, Harry Strum, implies, the interpretation of illegal fireworks, what sense is there? What good is there in uh, punishing law-abiding citizens because of the actions of people who already are not going to obey the law? Prohibition practices, I mean, if you want to see a perfect example, like prohibition just as a work of the week, you know? What did that create? The prohibition of, it only criminalized, turned for millions of people into criminals overnight and it enabled an entire horrendous situation in the town. And you're gonna have the same thing happen with fireworks, especially if you do, if this prohibition is putting after fireworks have already been purchased, as it's already been stated, the police department is understaffed, the fire department and the police department, they cannot enforce any of this. I don't understand why this is even being considered in this regard. Uh, again, anecdotally, I know for myself, anytime I've been involved in, you know, fire, illegal, safe, sane fireworks, it's always got a hose, like sand, water. And most people in town are like that. As, um, Mr. Favrell pointed out, he's absolutely correct, correct? If this is, my, 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 sorry. My other big concern with this is the fact that if this is something that is such a prevalent threat now, why was this not a prevalent issue a few years ago when we were in a worse drought than we are right now? The only thing I can really think of to begin with or conclusions is the last year and a half has had a lot of people um, in a sort of stringent panic mode where they grip onto anything that spoops them and have this automatic control mechanism. And have this automatic control mechanism with brain kicks and wanna try and prevent others from doing things that make them anxious and nervous. And that's, that's not how, that's not how our, that's not how our, our, our country, it's how our society has ever worked. You don't punish law-abiding citizens because of the things people who don't want to follow those laws are gonna do. Sorry, that's, that's really all I have to say on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Was that, was that it?
I think that's all we have, especially why I still wanted to.
Okay, I, I have two questions that came up. Uh, one was if, basically who makes the decision to shut down? And that would be the city council with the advice of the fire professionals. And, you know, we would have to declare an emergency.
Yeah, I don't wanna be in a state of emergency period.
The other question is why punish law-abiding citizens because of illegal fireworks? I think that's more of a rhetorical question, so, a good one.
It is, it is very.
Why not previously considered, I think that we did talk about fireworks last year. And at the time, there was an intent to bring back an after-action report, but when I look back, I think quite candidly, that was overcome by all the things that were going on until we got back to, so that it could be decided a lot later, so. That may be something that you may want to do in the future, but.
Obviously, obviously earlier.
Right, earlier, and, and we were reaching the, the same conclusions that the fire chief articulated.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna pull the plug. I, I'm speaking for myself. We don't wanna pull the plug on something that's last minute like that unless, like I said, unless it would, became so extreme that there's such a high chance that we're gonna burn down the city and not just be a state of emergency. That would go with any fireworks in any place and then all over the United States. It's like, we're not gonna jeopardize the citizens just so we can watch a fire show. So that's not our intent. Our intent is for everybody to enjoy the fireworks. Enjoy what, why we're here, the Fourth of July and what it means. And actually, we also need to look at too, is what that, what that entails and what that means. Celebration of our country, plain and simple. And that's where we need to stand with that. With that in mind, is there any other comments from the council?
Um, if I may just make, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. You posed the question of why we're here, why we're discussing it. It was brought to us by a city council member who asked for it to be on the agenda. Yes, you're asking why we're here, talking.
What I was specifically asking was, why is this an issue now than whereas it hadn't been a safety concern years ago when we were in worse drought?
Okay, uh, except, instead of council, a city council member, one of our members brought it and asked for it to be discussed. And a couple of citizens have expressed their concerns and, and that's why I just wanna explain. That's why we're here, is that it was brought and he has the right to bring it to the agenda and so. But I don't want to speak for him, he's not here. I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So all we have, I guess, one comment on, on that, so yeah, did you open that up, Arthur, for us, please?
Um, hello, this is Don Marie Autry. Um, I wanted to remind the council that the reason that we wanted the sale of fireworks not to be allowed this one year is because the water issue is so bad that the sheriff's department is even not letting people use water out there in Chasta Vista. We have a water issue, terrible bad. I mean, it's so bad that, that they're not even allowing irrigation down in Chasta Valley. So I, that is why we wanted the fireworks to be really considered here. I understand how many thousands of dollars you'll be out. And to threaten the city that they're gonna have to buy a shipping container? Wow. Wow. You know, think about what if there's a huge fire and do we have enough water to take care of it? Thank you.
Right now, Don Marie, we're, uh, as a city, we're not under any water restrictions as of yet. So we're not under those, any other weird guidelines by the county or anybody else. Right now, we're, we're not reduced on our usage yet. So we're sitting in a good spot and Fall Creek never fails to produce and over all these years, we've never had any problem with Fall Creek in our water source. But we do have to, you know, do any guidelines that the state does throw at us unfortunately. But as of right now, we're not under any water restrictions unless there's something new that came about. Is there a map? No, I didn't think so. So we're not under any water restrictions, so we're fine on that aspect. But thank you.
Well, talent wasn't either.
Yeah, I think, if she could finish up her comment.
Yes, is there anything else, Don Marie?
Uh, yeah, talent and Phoenix, you know, they weren't underwater restrictions either and look what happened.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I said, that's why we brought up the part that if we've gone into extreme conditions and we get to the kind of situation where it could possibly burn down our town, then we, then we look into those restrictions at that point in time. We're not there though. Okay, thank you, Don.
Yeah.
All righty, any other comments? If not, then I would, it's one of those things where there's really no action that needs to be taken unless somebody wants to take action as a council and present something to restrict that. As of right now, we don't have to, to take any action. We can just leave things as is, correct?
That is correct. You can either take an action or take no action.
So if there's anybody in the council that wants to take action, then I would say that we are, we're keeping things the way they are.
I take no action. Yeah, thank you.
We do have some other stuff.
It's exciting, we should say.
Oh, we shouldn't have left at the last. Everybody's leaving either.
Right. No.
As a deadline, we'd have to have another special.
So let's, well, we gotta go to number one since I didn't.
Oh, yeah.
So let's go number one and we go to number two. Number one, some possible actions set calendar. All matters listed in the set calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on the night. The city manager recommends approval of following set calendar items. A, approval of ratification of payments issued from May twenty-four, twenty twenty-one through June six, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of the minutes meeting of the, the meeting held on June first, twenty twenty-one. C, continuation of urgency outnumbered. Our order is some of the eight, five, which comes after Steve. D, treasures reported and cash budget to actuals April twenty twenty-one. Waveful text reading on all ordinance on agenda or it shall be introduced and adopted by title owners. So any questions from the, or comments from the council or from the audience?
If there are none, I'd make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we adopt all items, item one A, one B, one C, one D, and one E as presented.
Councilman Middleton, I'll second.
Motion and second. Mr. Baker then, who's the local again?
Yes, Mayor Bertrand Barrett.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor Kay.
Hi.
Showing employee excused absence.
All righty.
Excused absence? That's interesting. Did he need to bring a note?
Meeting, it's not excuse.
Now, I'll keep that in mind. I wish everybody would say to, to the number two, which is approval and appointment of Mark J. Kendall to the Warricka Fire Department.
I know.
Yes, that's what we should have done first.
This way, this way.
Go right into it.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's my pleasure to introduce you, Stephen, the young man who just graduated from high school last weekend. Introduce you, Mr. Mark Kendall. And Mark has adamantly, aggressively gone after the application process and completed everything in a timely fashion. So he's gonna be more than likely employed by Cal Fire during the summer, but we're gonna have him on his off days and then, you know, on these. He won't get much rest, but. He got from a whole bunch of firefighters, I mean, all folks in the back there are all, including Luke, his father, the team chief with Cal Fire. And we've been on fire together ourselves, but anyway, you know, he's already shown that he's got the big, this be, you know, a very good candidate. So we're happy to have him and we recommend him for approval and swearing in tonight, hope we get all that done.
Yes.
He can go to work.
That's awesome. I'm just, I'm just thankful to see a young, young generation stepping up to the plate. That's awesome. Love to see more of that. Thank you so much.
Raise correctly.
Raise right.
Thank you. Congratulations and welcome.
Yeah, congratulations, welcome.
Actually, what, uh, no, well, that, that is, that is what you've done in the past. Uh, because of transition of the fire department, we should be changing that procedure. And by we, I mean Jerry.
Yeah, you're not gonna be doing it.
So, but, so if you would like, you could accept him as a member of the department at this time.
Well, I'll make that motion then to accept him as a volunteer firefighter for Warricka Fire Department.
I'll second the motion if that's a motion.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
I made the motion. Yes, please.
Mayor Bertrand Barrett.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Hi.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor Kay.
Hi.
Employees have.
Awesome.
I think this is the first time you've had to do this.
Yay, Arthur.
Mark. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. That I will support, defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely. And I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter. Upon which I am about to enter. As a member of the Warricka Volunteer Fire Department. As a member of the Warricka Volunteer Fire Department.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, thank you.
Arthur, this was my first, because of COVID, this was my first time to be live swearing in it.
Oh.
So a lot, a lot of firsts tonight.
I just want to mention, Mayor, while the family is here, that I know that it's not just the person who volunteers, but also the family behind this. It makes a difference in being able to serve the community in this way.
That is, we thank, we thank. All righty. New, new guy on board. That's awesome. I was like, we're gonna get another new guy on board in another department tomorrow.
Yes.
I'm sure, I shouldn't say that, probably in the future. All right, we'll move on to number three. Environmental Restoration Strategy Authority. And I think this one is worth, is he coming up?
Yep.
There he is. Made you sit too long now, huh?
Remind you right now.
All of this, I'm here. And that's ten million acres. And it's the biggest garden in Northern California of that.
Yep.
So I got something in front of rock reef to consume. I wanted to have, I would say on, in my topic, that environmental restoration is a opportunity. Opportunity to do something better for the watershed. Now, I'll talk a little bit about that later, but I wanted to mention first that we have made a presentation to Siskiyou County. And that, as a local government. And that presentation was designed to make the county aware and other people that look to Siskiyou County and the different cities as some bigger leaders in a certain area. What we have identified, because we have identified five environmental strategies. And I want to share those five. Usually I close eight, I close the presentation with just those five. But tonight, I'm saying here are the solutions. And then we'll back up and tell you how I signed typically and somebody who associates that I work with arrived at. The first project that we feel is necessary is improving the quality of water. And the way to do that is to go ahead and put a treatment facility at Kewan. Okay? And there has been studies done as to the extent of that treatment facility. And it's been completed by the Department of Interior Bureau of Recreation. My second project is to do something, what you've been talking about for a long time tonight. Let's do something about improving the quantity of water. And we have identified a location on the Northern California border called Buck Lake. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with Buck Lake. Buck Lake is now a small reservoir. It only produces somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty, eight, thirty-three thousand acre feet of water. We proposed a plan to go ahead and raise the, at Buck Lake, to bring that up to about sixty thousand acre feet. And what that does is it provides clean water, clean water to Siskiyou County. And that's us. I'm very proud of doing the research on that particular project. The third one, which it starts on the twenty-first of this month, is a project that identifies and takes a look at the, some antique reefs that existed on the Clamath, on the Iron Gate Reservoir and the, and the Kaple Reservoir. Those two reefs have been identified, but we just started. Those two reefs have been identified, but we just started finding out about them about three months ago. And we have a contract now, the sonar studies on those two particular reefs to determine how deep they were, how high they were, and what they did. And it's so important for you people to know that that reef was just a few, just less than a half a mile below Fall Creek. And what that reef did when it was in place is it made an antique reef. And that antique reef obviously was sealed by concrete. That's a pretty important, that's a pretty important discovery that we made, and I'll tell you a little bit more about it. And then in Kapo, a thousand feet above, a thousand feet above to current, Kapo Dam, was a new lake called Clement Lake. And Clement Lake was made possible by a reef that held water in Clement Lake. So those are two antique reefs that are a force to start of what our strategy is from the standpoint of starting to build into the picture, into the understanding of people, the opportunity to see some things that went on in the past. And what is so important about those two antique lakes is that they possessed what we would refer to as landlocked salmon. And the reason that that's so important is because you have read frequently about the fact that we need to tear down this, or tear down that, or remove this, or do something so that we can move the salmon all the way up to the Williamson River and to this part of the world, up to the Williamson River, the Sprake River, the Sytam River, and the Wood River. The salmon are already there. And we just realized, not, not two months ago, a friend of mine who just retired from the Rocky Mountain Experiment Station was on a study team that invested, investigated what we refer to as red band salmon trout. There are people currently collecting or fishing for red band salmon trout. And one of the irrigation district people, one of the directors of the irrigation district in, in, up in the Clamath Falls area, has been fishing them. And he shared with me recently that he has caught a number of eight to 10 pound red band salmon. I said, why are they so important and how can they be landlocked? Answer, it's the only salmon that's got teeth in the upper jaw. And they're able to live on fingerlings, irregardless of where they come from. And if the fingerlings are coming up to that part of the world that are migratory in nature, remember, they don't eat anything but plankton after, after they left the ocean. Those particular fingerlings are available to redbacks, redbands. And that may be the reason why nobody ever thought of putting an hatchery at Fall Creek when it's good enough where it is so that the salmon can migrate to it and not go up into an area where there's still habitat for the red band salmon. Anyhow, I have a couple of pictures here and I can show them to you later if you're interested. The fourth project is to do something for the Shasta River and the Scott River. And the significance of the Shasta River and the Scott River is that currently we need to have the opportunity to improve some of your very important clients, and that's the ranchers. Currently, the ranchers in, and I'm, I got one here to my right. When the ranchers in that part of the world are only able to use about half of their improvements for irrigating Shasta River. The other connection to that particular project is to do the same kind of thing on Scott River. And the reason that that's so important is because there are thirty-some stream flow maintenance facilities in the present, in the Marble Mountains. They have, over time, lost all of their storage responsibility. And we know investigating those particular, those particular lakes, we know that we can raise the output of Scott River by at least thirty cubic feet a second. And the other thing that we can do is then expand in the Scott Riverside an opportunity for salmon to, to advance almost to Etna for habitat. The last project was the one that I participated in just before I retired, was a project that identified the sub-basins on, on the main stem of the Clamath, below Scott River. And those particular sub-basins have thirteen, had, or sixty of them, but they had thirteen streams that are still well oriented towards harvesting, or towards this spawning of salmon. What we found out is that if those facilities were used, we would have a natural flow or natural presence, population presence of salmon to the tune of 500,000. I want to share with you why that's so important. And why that's so important is the fact that we now know that the ex statement from the oceans at some times could be less than nineteen thousand salmon adults, mature. And the other thing we, we know is the maximum ex statement from the ocean is 232,000 salmon. So what we are looking at here with both, with that improvement is we're looking at the possibility of at least increasing the salmon, yeah, the Clamath River, um, Iron Gate Hatchery all the way to the ocean to the tune, somewhere in the neighborhood, maybe 400,000 fish. That's a pretty sizable number, and I think it would be something very important. So that was my presentation to three, to, to, to another city and to the, to the college, or to the, uh, college, because I used to be. The, that includes my, uh, my notion that we can do some good things. And we also know that there was a presentation done by the legislature of Republicans and Democrats in 2008. And they have made available for looking at study opportunities for two rivers, Clamath and Colorado. We think that under a coalition of cities and the county, there may be an opportunity to make an effort to take on, at least the scientific side is looking at these particular projects because they have made available $10 million a year. And that can go a long ways, at least doing the technical stuff. I'm not talking about building, I'm talking about technical examinations. Well, where did this idea start coming from? The, I, the opportunity for, for, for doing some of this kind of stuff occurred back in 2008. Some of you were here in 2008, most of us, I guess, were. And we found out in 2008 that the twenty-six stakeholders representing the other, the bookend of the coastal tribes and the farmers in the, uh, in the Clamath Basin tribe, wanted to do an environmental restoration strategy. It's there, it's there. Now, they took an action, which I don't support, but in this particular case, they, they presented an environmental restoration strategy. And here's what it said. It said, "A comprehensive report program to rebuild their populations." I just got through telling you all on them. The second thing they asked for was that, uh, we want to reintroduce an animal species into uh, into blocked, currently blocked parts of the basin. On those thirteen streams that I told you about, there's another thirty that are somewhat blocked. And there's an opportunity, if you want to talk about more fish coming out to Clamath River, a good opportunity is right there. The other ones that I wanted to share with you, a couple more that I wanted to share with you, is they talked about the opportunity to reintroduce salmon. I just got through telling you about that. The red band salmon are something that they didn't even really know they had, and they are currently above Fall Creek, on, to Williamson and, uh, and the Wood and Sytam and, and the other river. Another important point in that restoration strategy that was performed by these twenty-six people, some agencies, some non-government organizations, some state organizations, a couple came from Siskiyou County, but they want to stabilize power costs. And I've shared with, I haven't shared with you, but you know about the possibility that if we lose our hydro electric power, we're going to have to go to the grid. And if you go to the grid, you lose the hydro prep stuff, and you end up paying eight times more for most of it. That's a big deal. That's a big. My last one was a program intended to ensure mitigation for counties that may be impacted by the removal of hydro collect services. Why not, why not take a look in those projects that I talked about? That's mitigation. And I think that's pretty important for the six cities and Siskiyou County to get. So that, that was how I kind of stacked the things together, but I want to take you one step further. One step further is that I talked to you about my, uh, my garden. Ring Rock Park, right there, it's a little bigger. It extends 300 miles from the ocean, which is right here. It extends through all the way up here, and goes all the way, all the way up to, almost to, uh, Chillicothe, the town of Chillicothe, I think is the right, right town. That's 300 miles. It's pretty good. I'm proud of it. I'm, I'm glad to say that when I was the forest supervisor, I administered sixty-two percent of that. And you didn't have the problems that you're hearing about today. So I'm proud of that little thing. But I want to share with you that during my course of assignment as a forest supervisor, I was able to present and be a part of managing to cover every foot of the Clamath River either by helicopter, uh, by, by horseback, or by foot, or by, you know, water vehicle. I'd be pretty, pretty much exposed to what I'm starting to tell you about tonight. I wanted, I wanted to make one little note into what I refer to as reaches. My associates and I have some biological, social, legal, and economic perspective. Professionally not comfortable with the various land and water management strategies that have been going on before I introduced the project. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to take the opportunity. And it has been endorsed, and we have made, and we have made sure that the enforcement centered on Siskiyou County. And I want to share with you my success for this project. Was to find you, the first thing I learned was I wanted to give the target to the lab. Enough way to sit through about an hour, hour and a half of the period. Anyhow, we want to, we want to talk about Reach One. And Reach One is the Pacific Ocean and the Estuary. Pacific Ocean has plenty of things going on at the far as the ocean. And one of those funny things that go on at the far as the ocean is earthquakes. What happens with those earthquakes is it changes the temperature of the ocean, surface of the ocean. And as a result of changing that temperature, you have periods of time where there's a lack of productivity of food for the salmon. So what happens is that it may delay their entry into the estuary. And what happens at the estuary is that's where salmon converge, convert from green water to salt water. The reason that they convert from green to salt is that's the way it's been for most of their lives. But it gives them the opportunity then to advance up, through the tribal area and on up to what I refer to as the, uh, beginning, which would, which will be the beginning of the National Forest Plan, which is a type of the Six Rivers National Forest and the, and the Clamath National Forest. But in that Trinity Reach, that's called Reach Number Two, there's an export of water. And how many people know about that? That you're exporting water from the Clamath River to Shasta Valley? Any of you familiar with that? That's kind of a new thought. And there's no reason why it can't happen because in that particular part of the river, the opportunity, the Trinity River raises the volume of water that's flowing. About five thousand, five thousand feet of, of water. That's a lot of water, and a good percentage of it's dumped into the ocean. So there's good reason to give, to take the opportunity to send the water from Clamath River exported and send it down to Shasta Valley where it's used for domestic and transportation use. The third reach is this particular reach, and I had a good name for it. Maybe I still have it. Anyhow, I'm going to, this is a Reach Number Three. There's plenty of opportunity for all sorts of multiple resource activities. And very significant for the opportunity to do silviculture, remove forest products. A very good economic base exists in this particular area. And when I was supervisor, we were able to provide for road to schools in Siskiyou County, seven million dollars per year. It's a pretty good amount of money. It's not like that. And that's called payment and rule of taxes, payment and rule of taxes.
Bless you. Try to get that help money back, bud.
Yeah. I wish I had a quick solution, but there was a, it was sponsored by the Senator from Minnesota. Can't remember the name of the man, but she just, she organized it, and she managed to bring both houses of Congress together. Um. Hang on a minute, I guess, check my notes here so I don't forget some. Anyhow, the Trinity Reach was Reach Two. And that, and I shared quite a bit about the importance of the Reach Two, and that was the Trinity River. And the good work that was on it. I did not say, share with you that one of the reasons that we have low productivity for the escape of salmon is the fact that in this particular reach, which is the tribal, really the tribal reach, Congress has passed a law, and it says that fifty percent of the escaped salmon from the ocean to that particular reach, fifty percent is available for staining, for, for steering, and also for going. So, if you take away fifty percent of nineteen thousand that escaped, there's not a rule left. No, one or two. Okay, Reach Number Four. Covered a little bit about Reach Number Three. And Reach Number Three is significant because of all of the opportunities for multiple resource activity and a tremendous amount of employment that goes on associated with that particular reach. I share with you that during my working days, I had six hundred employees here and around. In case of fire, I proved that that's quite a, quite a group of people. The next reach, which is the... The next reach that I want to share with you is the checkerboard reach. And a lot of you probably are not aware of the checkerboard reach and why it's got permanent sections of white and then some gray. The checkerboard reach was at one point in time land that was made available to build the railroads to the west. And it's a pretty important segment because in this particular reach, of course, City of Warricka is there, and Montague, and Etna, and Fort Jones. And that particular, uh, reach also has the Shasta River and the Scott River. So, I already explained to you a little bit about the importance of what we can do for both the Shasta and Scott. And here is a good opportunity because the key to the existence in this particular area are heads of federal agencies. And they have an opportunity, really a good opportunity, to start participating in some sort of a coalition that can help us get on top of getting some financing to do some work.
Well, does that checkerboard area, the white area, does that still belong to the railroads?
No, the white area belongs to forest growers.
Oh, food growers.
Forest growers have a board here. And, and the National Forest and BLM, by the State Department of Public Safety. This is, this is, this is where I talked a little bit in other meetings about the importance of, of interpretive service information. And Maria, and she knows it very well. And so, I had the opportunity to talk about that a little bit, and an opportunity to go ahead and get information and understand a little bit more about what goes on. So, that was something that I used in other presentations, but here, here, you know about it, so. You take it on again. Well, here comes Region Five, or Reach Five. And Reach Five is a thirty-six mile canyon reach that runs essentially above this red line all the way through Iron Bay Hatchery. The hatchery because it takes, cause some water from Bulgus Creek, but it also gets some water from City of Warricka. The important part of this particular reach is the fact that there is a major federal measuring station in this particular reach. And that major federal measuring station, just in the neighborhood of Fort Jones, measures the opportunity for the availability of water. And the availability of water to, uh, is, can be used to identify what we now refer to as the air dry region of, of the Klamath Watership. So, we are in the air dry region, and the other region that we have identified is the mountain region. Mountain region covers the Marple Mountains to the coast. They're, they're, they're enjoying rainfall generally between forty inches and ninety inches a year. And the air dry reach, which we're in, is lucky to have something more than four inches. Therefore, when you start looking at the Klamath River, you start looking at what goes on in Reach Five. And it's the storage opportunity of water. And the opportunity to use the storage opportunity for water for the, for the, for the opportunity to, um, for the, as the Wild and Sea River, under the National System. He came to the Klamath Management Corps to see to the Forest Service and, and Secretary of Regulatory Services. One of your first jobs, Bob, is to go ahead and decide whether or not to win or show the place in that being a river. I stumbled, and the reason I stumbled was I couldn't meet one of the criteria. And that's the free flowing opportunity of the river. So, I said, "I'll start that tree, that National Sea River, at the land gate, therefore, I have free flowing river for her." And it worked. Felt pretty good, but out. Uh, wanted to take you one more step in, on, on, on Region Five. And I mentioned, or Reach Five, excuse me. And I mentioned the significance of that reach. And when you start figuring about, about resources, you then start adding, that's actually what you actually call a reach. And the power reach means hydroelectric power. And the significance of hydroelectric power and the relationship to the fact that I've covered the concern by having four hundred miles open up to run, to run salmon all the way up to the Woodlands and the Wood. And I also covered the opportunity of there's some antique lakes. I also covered the opportunity of how important Fall Creek and Spencer Creek are, as advertised for those red things out. And I've also covered the fact, which I don't know if many of you know about, and that gives the opportunity for the Shasta tribe, when they had eighteen villages, fifteen villages, in that thirty-six mile canyon. And the most recent study done by the Bureau of Land Management identified the fact that there are over one hundred cultural sites of the Shasta Indians in that particular area. And those one hundred cultural sites are now covered by water. If you lose the cut, the water covers of those sites, you lose, you, you make available the, the taking of special projects because all of the setting, the villages, the lands, and some of the, some of the sites, parasites and others become available for people to snatch. The cultural resources of the Shasta. We identified, as I shared with you, the fact that nearby salmon were there at three and four, and left them, the two fishermen, Indian Tom and Indian Jake. One was in Long Island, one was in Shasta. And the only importance of them being there is they are two tribal members who used to scare fish at those two, those two groups that were brought to the river. And now even more than that, Indian Jake's, who was being with the pack, the salmon, up to Tuxedee, Terry, great, and Joe, who are territory, and barter, or have what I refer to as the first farm market in California. A year around. Okay, um, Region, Region, Reach, Reach Six. Is that particular reach that extends from Kino Dan, right there, all the way to the out there of Williamson River. And the note that I have is that the importance of that particular reach is the Kino Needle Dan. The Kino Needle Dan does not provide electricity. It only provides thirteen gates. And to make sure that thirteen gates are utilized, depending on what water type you're, we might, we have dry year, you might see all the gates open. If you have a wet year, you might see only one or two open. That's significant in managing Klamath River. Another, another point that I wanted to make is that in this particular reach, there are four canal systems. And in those four canal systems, you will find, uh, water distributed from Lake Ullana and Kino Reservoir that go to the project. And the reason that it's so important that they go to the project is that they are also selling ponds for the Pacific Flyway. And the Pacific Flyway, which I shared a little bit with Deb, the Pacific Flyway is, uh, is the flyway that waterfalls and over two hundred and seventy-five species of birds travel up through Siskiyou County and move their way all the way up into this particular area for breeding, nesting, nesting, and bringing their life up to security. Very significant, this is a very significant, uh, uh, reach. My, my last reach is Reach Seven. A lot of people, like a lot of us, Siskiyou County, up to this particular point, where that particular beach is four hundred, four hundred, um, four mile, uh, four, or, four million acres in this particular beach, four million acres. And you think about the Canada, you need to... The Klamath Watership, here is one, it's almost. It's so interesting, it happens to also be the source of water that comes to California. And within that particular reach, there is an area that is managed by two national forests. Each community near the coast pays in place by ninety-nine thousand acres of pasture. And also two large farmland packages. And then the rest of the area, even at one point in time, may have belonged to Klamath's tribe. And that's, is the, most of that particular area had been transferred to the management opportunities. So, we have done quite a good study on the silverware in this particular reach. And we have found that, generally speaking, a cubic feet of water entered up the Klamath Reservoir going to four, means that particular area after payment, through the process of irrigation or whatever. That leads us into the point of saying, okay, let's, let's, let's take this particular opportunity and start making people aware of that. And that, my hermitage, that deals with the presence of people, the presence of resources, the presence of economic capital opportunity, and the presence of people opportunity. And that pushes us into the framework of saying, anything you do in any one of these reaches must be considered through a process called spark one. That's all I got, Steve. Sorry to put for long. That's a big subject.
That's a lot of information. Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Well, maybe you can use it, and I hope to have an opportunity to, and know that, uh, that has been, uh, pretty much my share of time is thirteen years digging into the scientific.
Lot of information, lot of information, that's true. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I'm ready for questions.
Anybody got any questions?
I asked my question. You owns that property.
No, it's good, thank you, Bob. Um, that line, I don't, I don't have any questions. Sorry to shorten this a little bit. I'm going to take a five-minute recess because the mayor needs to. So, and then we'll have you jump on board right after that, okay?
I'll keep mine as brief as possible.
Okay, thank you.
We have a long agenda.
No, no, there's too much information just to drop it all in ten minutes, that's for sure. No, no, there's too much information just to drop it all in ten minutes, that's for sure. Started again. And next speaker is Tony.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council for allowing the Siskiyou County Water Users Association to put on this presentation. As Bob had said, there are, there's an opportunity here. You have a ton of scientific information now. It's almost like you're drafted apart.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just, so what do you do with this? I think I'm going to be able to show you how to use this to the citizens, the citizens benefit. Okay, the opportunity, before I speak about, uh, this presentation that was being made tonight has already been made to the city of Montague, the Montague Irrigation District. And I had a conversation with the new, uh, board on the Coppel Lake Fire Protection District. And they want me to come and make, and Bob, to make the same presentation to them. What we're hoping to do, and Bob mentioned this, is a form of coalition. The two cities, the Irrigation District and the Fire Protection District. And why the coalition, I will show you, I hope, and explain. So. There is a process. Or in the packet I gave you, uh, there is a news release. It's the last document. And that's probably where we'll start at the back. Yes, that, that's the opportunity, one of the opportunities that Bob used to. And what that is. Is a news release by the White House where they want to form a working group. And they empower the Secretary of Interior and the Secretary of Agriculture to form this working group. And then Bill Sac, the Secretary of Agriculture, made a public statement that said, in fact, if you haven't read it, we will collaborate with tribes, producers, agricultural landlords, world communities to build an alliance for the drought, to fight the drought. Okay, you can ask to join us just as a city council if you wish. But you won't have the standing if you don't have the proper designation to deal with the feds. And what I'm talking about is that you make an application through a letter to be a cooperating agency. There are various agencies in environmental negotiations, starting with the lead agency, cooperating agency, coordination, coordinating agency. And all of those levels have a purpose. The coordinating agency has the most authority. If you can get that designation, you, under the law, become equal to the feds. And there's a law that says things that. How do I know all this? Uh, it's not in my file because I had to put it in. But I had the benefit of studying and working with probably the premier attorney in this field, retired Justice Department attorney by the name Fred Kelly Brandt. Some of you know his name. God rest his soul. He was a heck of a gentleman. Yes, you very, very, we were both the same age. I don't know why I'm still here. Stupid Italian. But. Anyway. Fred taught me a great deal and I learned a great deal, so. What happens is. You make application with a letter. I, there's a, there's an example of a letter in there if you. And then. I, my smart strategy is that we propose to move this, if this call, first, let's form this coalition. Let's hope that all four of your entities can come together and then maybe other cities will come together. Okay. If you get the coalition together, you send a letter, each of you individually, because each of your entities has a different issue to deal with. It's water related, but it's a different issue. So you, you each draft your own letter. Has to be done in a specific language, with a specific language. Requesting that you be designated as, and allowed to come to the working group first in the drought issue. And that means, now you have a, you have a ton of information given to you tonight. And this is how we will do it. You will have this, and the water users, we will be happy to sit down with you and go through the scientific data that you've been given. And you can pick what suits your situation the best, particularly the issues on fall rate of the water. Because if, if they get away with the plan that they're talking about by putting the hatchery up there, there's not going to be enough water for water. There's only C seven CFS total. And the hatchery uses five. Anyway, so how do you stop that if that's their plan? So as a cooperating agency, what happens legally? When you say something in an environmental negotiations or in a study and under the NEPA Plan, National Environmental Policy Act, there's something that a lot of people don't know about. And this is something that Fred and I worked on for years and people, and to get the word out. I have a, an extra copy here. You can probably make more and pass it around. There's a little-known council that was originated from the White House back about almost twenty years ago. Called the Council on Environmental Quality.
CEQ.
CEQ. The CEQ regulates NEPA. Not a lot of people know about that. I, I think you do because you've been involved in, in government for a long time. So, but what they don't understand is this, and I'm just very, I'm proposing that you guys consider drafting this letter and joining the other entities. That's what I'm here to propose to you. And I, I just want to cover very quickly. What, what allows you to do that? First, there's the thirty-one US Code, uh, section C three oh two, which defines, it's in your pocket. Defines what a, the local agency is and that's who you guys hold in that criteria. Now, under the Council on Environmental Quality Regulations. It's forty CFR fifteen zero seven. It says, in order to assure that the agencies restrict. You guys, if you can give them negotiations, the promulgation of the rules in NEPA that are necessary to the human environment. Promulgate the rules to the benefit of the human envi- this is critical. NEPA, most people think NEPA is an environmental document of extinction. There is no mention in the entire document about species. Zero. It's an environmental document about the human environment and the effect on the human environment. And it states in there in one place in NEPA that it is for the benefit and the harmony of man and its environment, the man's environment, and for all future Americans. That's in section one oh two. So anyway. And then there's a part of the, uh, the Council on Environmental Quality. That's actually a congressional mandate. That means there's no women. And that's what controls NEPA. Now, I know the, the FERC and the hydroelectric facility removal problem that we're all dealing with and you could be a part of that, you could, but I think before trying that, that we take this opportunity where, where, where Bill Sac invited local participation in the drought. Get the designation as a cooperating agency. If you can get that. Great, then you, we will provide you with information, help you sit down, we'll, we'll even open meetings too, if you want us to. And we have Bob because you know how much information he has. So, and he said, he kept using the word we and it was all him. Which is expertise and, and did it, but he's, he's a consultant to our organization. In fact, right now, as we speak, well, tomorrow morning, uh, the divers will be up there. They're getting ready to set up to look for those reefs.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so we, it's cost us a lot of money. We've got donations, but we're, we're committed to this, trying to save this thing, so. Okay. Other than that, I really don't have much more. And then just ask you to really seriously consider doing this. Because it don't cost you anything. We'll, we'll draft the letter for your approval. You know, you guys will look at it. If it's something you don't like, we can, we'll massage your hour. We'll do all the work. It won't cost anyone. It's not adversarial. It's not confrontational. It's just purely asking. It's just purely asking for permission to be considered as a cooperating agency to sit down and discuss the environmental issues. So, I guess I skipped one part that's important. What the law says also. That as a cooperative agency, when you have an issue and you, and you're in the discussions with the other tribes and the entities on environmental issues and you have a solution, they just can't file it. The law says that as a cooperating agency, if the group goes ahead and files an environmental document without considering and addressing and taking an action on your proposal, the environmental document is no good. That's him, the statute. That's why it's important to have that standing. That's why I'm trying to get us, not my community, the Water Users Association, I'm over there. Get this coalition put together. And I'll make a quick comment because you've had a long night as it is. Coordinating agency. Under the Federal Land Management Planning Act, Slippa, the record. It states that the secretary, whether it be Bill Sack or Taylor or whoever of any cabinet level office has a plan and they want to, and that plan affects local government. And if local government requests to be a coordinating agency, the plan has to be consistent with the locals' plan. The feds cannot impose there. So then that means you become equal. Only under coordination, not under any other category. So, but first, you don't want to jump there because they really don't like to see coordinating agencies. But this strategy that I'm talking about, I had a discussion with Sean Curtis, the, uh, I think he's the environmental officer and the planning director for Moab County. I know that's who Sean works for.
He is to be on the board of supervisors.
Yes. Uh, now Sean and I have been friends for years. And of course, well, through Fred Kelly Grant, that's how all this, okay. And I called him a while back and told him what I was thinking about the water use, what we were thinking about doing. He says, well, we've had great success in Moab County in implementing co- cooperating agencies, he says. He says, when we go to like BLM, we asked, well, we want to sit down and discuss the sage grouse and why the farm, the ranchers can't raise. We want to do it as a cooperating agency. Okay. If he says, if we'd have said coordinating, he says they would have backed off right away because they know that they're equal. So that's why I'm proposing we sneak in with the cooperating agency. Because what happens if you're sitting at the table with them as a cooperating agency and an issue comes up and you, and they don't want to do it, you can request and they cannot refuse. You can request an intra-agency co- coordinating meeting. And then you've got the handle. So, that's, that's a good touch up.
Nice, thank you.
I certainly know, assuming you guys figure out, and I'll, in fact, after I talk to Cocko, if we can put this coalition together, I think we are real nice.
No, a lot of, a lot of good benefits if we can get on board, for sure. That's awesome. Thank you, John. You know, that's a lot, got a lot of information today.
I know, I'm sorry. That's why I didn't want to.
No, no, thank you though.
Yeah, thank you.
I will, I will, next board meeting, if it's a water users, I'll try to get together, uh, maybe a synopsis.
Okay.
Of all this information that you have and have, and so that you can get a handle on.
Absolutely.
Whatever you bring to us, I would like it reviewed by our attorney, our city attorney, before we make a decision.
Well, yeah. I was going to ask the mayor and the city manager, is our attorney online?
Is what?
We don't need him. He probably.
Somebody was on.
No, he's not on there.
It's going to take him some.
Yeah, oh yeah.
He needs to review.
Yeah, definitely.
I gotta ask you guys a question. Who prepared your interviewer memo to FERC?
We have a FERC attorney. We have a FERC attorney. It's separate from our city attorney.
You do? Okay. Well, he didn't prepare it right.
Oh, really?
Really?
Look at my examples in the packet.
Okay.
And then look at what he did.
Okay.
FERC sent out a memo with the guidelines of how they wanted the interviewer memos prepared.
We, we did, we did, um, send a letter of intervention.
Well, that's true. All that does is allow you to intervene and file an amicus curiae on a court case. That's all it does. Doesn't give you a better.
Meeting, this is to align our current policies with the actual ordinance, which is called our laws. Um, the biggest change in here is that we are proposing to allow the mobile vendors.
Hold on, um, I can't hear you. There's talking going on behind you. Can you ask them to take it outside?
Tony? That's okay. We just, I can't, I'm hard of hearing, so it's, I get a lot, I get a lot of background noise. I can't hear.
The biggest change is to allow the mobile vendors to stay for eight hours instead of the two hours that our code says. We did a public hearing and at this time I would, uh, ask the mayor to open the public hearing up to see if anybody has any comments and then have a decision by council.
All right. I'd like to open up for, for public hearing, public comments at this point in time. See if there's any public comments.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
No line.
How many online?
There's no public comments. We'll close the public comment section of this and go back into, open it up to the council. Is there any questions about a council?
We've had plenty of review. Yes.
We've already.
If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to a group as presented.
Councilman Middleton, a second.
Motion a second. Baker, please.
Mayor Pretender.
Hi.
City Councilmember Prayman.
Hi.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor K.
Hi.
And Troy Abson.
Abson, okay.
And this will be, was again, discussion possible actions, only code amendment, Feds sites.
Okay, same thing. We introduced this ordinance at our last meeting. This one makes quite a few changes. We set it up for a public hearing and I would ask the mayor open it up for public hearing. I don't know if Don Marie's still on the line or Lontao, if they have a comment.
Open it up to public hearing for this part.
This is the one for Feds sites.
Yes, correct.
Couple of things need clarification. If you have a non-compliant fence, let's say a board fence forty-nine inches high and one board in that fence piece to be replaced. One single board, less than thirty percent, you have to go to, you have to apply to the planning commission for a minor conditional use permit to replace the bed, the damaged portion. Replace the one board.
So it's not a thirty percent.
It's less than thirty.
Thirty, less than thirty percent.
All right. So how much is that going to cost to apply for the minor conditional use permit?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars. And how long will it take?
One to two days.
Seventy-five dollars for place one board.
Right now with the non-compliant fence, you would be able to take down the entire fence.
Entire fence.
All right. And the, um, the fence site should last significantly visually obstruct or reduce the opening nuts of the street. Uh, who's going to, who's going to go out there and make this judgment call?
Code enforcement.
Yep.
Like they don't have anything else to do. And once you have the schedule, code enforcement will go out. So it's going to take more than one or two days.
If I have other people such as the police department, if it's a visual or a safety issue, we would enlist the police department.
Yeah, they don't have anything better to do either.
That's part of their job, so.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is a lot of micromanaging existing fences.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got to draw the line someplace and we have to have some type of regulation. I know you don't.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
May I ask a question? How did, Liz, where are you? How did the planning, how did the planning commission come up to thirty percent of the fence?
We pulled other studies. Most places don't allow it at all.
At all.
And we tried to come up with some kind of a percentage to enable you to keep your fence.
Keep the fence. So if less than thirty percent of the fence is damaged that you have to replace, then you don't have to do all this.
You can apply to.
You can apply to do that.
Oh, that's the seventy-five dollar.
Correct.
Permit?
All right.
That's my question.
We're going to have all the fences someday. We realize that, you know, right now, any non-conforming fence is four feet right now. According to our current code.
Yep.
Maybe that should be changed.
That's what we're trying to do.
Doing right now.
And non-charge equals seventy-five dollars for place one.
That we can easily, and one board is probably not.
Would, would be replaced anyways. More likely you're going to replace a certain percentage of it anyways. I know I wouldn't just replace one board. And probably anyways, if somebody were to just replace one board, like you said, no one's going to watch over that, that closely anyway. So it probably would slip through the cracks anyways. So. No, I'm not saying that at all, at all. I'm just saying we have to have certain legal aspects that we have to obtain and, and guidelines we have to go off of. And that's the steps we're trying to do to make sure that all, everybody follows the guidelines at this point in time. So if there's any other questions of, uh, from the public? Anybody on? Yeah, I'm going to close the section of the public hearing and open it back up to the council. A council comments?
No. No.
Okay.
Debbie Barrett, I would like to move that we accept as presented item number five regarding the adopted ordinance number eight six three, amending section sixteen point four six point zero five zero of chapter sixteen point four six of title sixteen of the library municipal code relating to fencing wells, hedges and screens planting and finding that this ordinance is exempt from sequel.
I'll second that. We'll call Mr. Baker, please.
Mayor Pretender.
Hi.
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 We are on to number six. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
There's a possible action, UWMP hearing and resolutions.
Herb one.
Yeah.
Is the urban water management.
Doesn't really roll off.
No.
That's why I like herb one.
Herb one's easier.
Well, you'll find that none of the professionals, you can call it herb one.
Oh my goodness, you are so patient. You're still here.
Yes.
Bless you. He looks like he's in pain.
Bless you.
Mayor, yes, so I've been with municipal project manager, been looking with Rob Taylor around the warm side of things. So basically, the urban water management plan is a document that we.
You were a bit closer because I noticed that. Can you hear him, Grant?
I can now.
Okay.
Okay. Exactly into the microphone.
Hello? Uh, so the document was, uh, originally prepared back in twenty fifteen. And, uh, every five years, the, uh, the state requires a, an update. And with that, we're kind of taking it from here.
Sure, I, I know we're, uh, running a little bit late, so I'll just briefly go over it. It's just, just like we're talking about, it's just an update. We've incorporated five years of new data. It appears the Cliff Notes of the whole document, it's a four hundred page long document. So the Cliff Notes is, we look like we're on track to meet the twenty twenty goal, which was set out, which is, which is fantastic news. And, uh, that means that you will continue to meet the requirement to qualify for certain grants. And, um, yeah, you're, you're stepping off on a, a good foot moving forward to the next one. So with that, if you have any specific questions, I can answer them, but, um, or, uh, yeah, that's it.
Just sum up what those four hundred pages say.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
That one is a two-page summary.
It's a lengthy document, but it's really driven by regulatory requirements that we just have to touch on every single topic. So that's, but that is the short version.
Okay, thanks. I do have a question.
Okay.
Okay, on page one of the resolution itself, at the bottom of the second paragraph, it states, current requirements are that urban water suppliers prepare water conservation plans that will produce a, this is where I'm getting a little cloudy here, will produce a ten percent per capita water savings by twenty twenty and a twenty percent per capita water savings by twenty twenty compared to a historic baseline, all in the same year?
Doesn't that mean ten years apart?
Or at least? Page one of three of the resolution.
It's first paragraph, no, the second paragraph. At toward the end of the paragraph.
Okay.
Good question. It's a little confusing for me. I want to be a proofreader when I grow up. Was that correct?
It's called twenty percent by twenty twenty, right? Now that comes down from the state or the feds?
Does that make sense to you guys?
It doesn't make sense to me either, but, um, before I, I wouldn't want to tear it apart yet because much of this language was taken again from DWR themselves, what they want to see in certain resolutions. So I would like to review that to make it match whatever the DD, DWR has. But my understanding is it only needs to be the twenty twenty, twenty percent, the ten percent per capita water savings is, uh.
You think that was a twenty ten or the twenty fifteen?
Yeah.
So we'll get that corrected and, and bring that back to you.
Is there a date that needs to be completed sound back?
Yes, it's July first, so you won't make your next meeting.
Oh, no.
Oh, can, can, can we word it, the motion, so that you can confirm the numbers? Upon, we can approve with the condition that you confirm the numbers?
Yes.
If, if you're okay.
Thank you.
So, so what we'll, what we'll do in this situation, when it's a resolution on this, and, and it is undoubtedly a typo.
Yeah.
It's either the clause has been left in from a previous version or the date is a different date. It's one of those two. I, there's a possibility, the baseline, as I recall, is the same for both. There's an earlier contribution measure, but we use the same baseline as I recall.
That doesn't make sense. It says that will produce, I would say, just take that ten percent out. That will produce a twenty percent per capita water savings by twenty twenty compared to a historic baseline. This is referred to as twenty percent by twenty twenty.
So, so it, it doesn't make sense and that's why we're doing it. What I would suggest is adopt it as is and we will correct, protect both. Either delete that clause on the ten percent.
Either delete that clause on the ten percent, change it to whatever the right date is, because that may be actually the goal in twenty ten or twenty fifteen, I just don't remember.
Yeah, I hope so, because otherwise we're looking at thirty percent.
Well, no, it's not additive, I know that. So does Garrett, Garrett, Garrett knows that. Grant.
Right.
Grant, I'm, I'm, I'm reading your name as Garrett all of a sudden.
That's okay, we've got Garrett's in our office, so more than cussing to it. Would it take council action at that time if, if that does need to be, uh, corrected? Um, or can we word?
It's just a typo, we could correct it.
Okay.
If it's more than that, then we would need to bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my suggestion is, it matches yours, is to adopt it as is, so we can get it in by July first. If we need to correct it, we'll come back and correct it, but it's on typos. Um, and I'm not gonna, on typos, I would usually refer to the city clerk, but he's still. He's still in his rookie status as well. Is, is, we can't, but we can't correct the typo.
I'm pretty sure you take the ten percent out, maybe.
If I'm reading the resolutions, I need to get a life. This is sad.
No, appreciate you bringing up, because I think that we probably read right through that, so.
Yeah, I did.
Anyway, but the idea, the, the, on there, you are correct that the, um, requirement is the twenty percent by twenty twenty. And that is the relevant, so that probably.
That's what I think. But it's, uh, something you guys.
No, I'm, I'm okay with that, because, because of that, as long as it's, that's all it is, yeah.
Yeah, if you could just adopt a resolution and, and, and correct the typo, and let us figure out.
Okay.
So is that a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we adopt the resolution and correct the typo.
Yes. I'll second it.
Busy, busy second person.
Okay. Mr. Baker.
Mayor Pretender.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye.
Where is that?
Yeah.
Thank you again for your patience.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
Thank you for bringing it in there.
For your understanding, working through that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
You'll get it fixed right, otherwise the mayor won't sign it.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, number seven.
We should have had that. Program, so we should have had him go first program.
I know.
Three hours.
Expenses of funds prior to adoption of the budget, adoption of resolution authorizing expenditures of funds, prior to adoption of the fiscal year ending June twenty, or June thirtieth, twenty-two annual budget. This would be better.
I think, um, just, um, I know this is frustrating, but it's been a year. Um, we've gotten a lot of things done, um, and this year is kind of a, getting the vacant seats filled priority on things that, that's been off consuming.
A lot going on.
There is a lot going on, however, the good news of this is, um, I think we're gonna be a very strong position city, although we are doing a lot of, and expected spending, we're kind of in a, a growth mode, I feel, for our, um, capital projects, and a lot will be accomplished on the budget. So, in short, what this is asking is for, um, adoption, um, of a resolution that allows us to, um, extend funds prior to the adoption of the budget for fiscal year, I think, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, and just kind of highlights what we've done so far, we have had our first workshop, I thought, that was a lot of good information departments brought to light at the workshop. Um, we've made some intermediary decisions where we felt that projects would cross over fiscal year so that they could, uh, some of these capital projects could get moved by, such as the H back to the parking lot, uh, projects that I think you already seen, um, public works out, working on, certainly in the parks, and, uh, with that.
When? It started today.
Yes, that's right, it did start today. Um, and we set up the property nuisance base fund, we didn't want to delay for the budget for that, so that, uh, code enforcement, um, to get going on that. So, actually, while it was kind of reloaded, we, you know, we're still working on the budget, because it was nice and quiet, um,
Oh, Mary, I heard it.
Well, though, I was listening, but, um, you know, it's kind of every, every sermon I can get to. I do expect, I'm going to draft budget, um, circle back in July, it might even be, have a primance, maybe, um, the last week of June, if things work out. Um, I've been sticking by, but just do expect budget adoption sometime July, August, um.
I would prefer July.
Yeah.
At least by the second meeting in July, because if we're approving expenditure as usual, yeah, I would feel more comfortable with it.
The, uh, difficulty is that, uh, prep time and the day's time that you'll leave for that, so, um, really, that's, that's a tight timeline, but we'll try. Um, it's, we may need to circle back when we kind of have the gap, make sure everybody's comfortable where we are at the gap. Um, and when I think gap, that's, um, the comparison of revenue to expenditures. So, um, I, certainly in July, we'll be discussing the gap, and whether or not we need more further changes or, with that, yeah.
Yeah, the gap is what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
Some of the difference in expenditures, if we're going to be spending money as usual, when maybe we don't have as much, I think we're gonna be okay.
I think.
From the finance committee, uh, portion, you know, opinion, I think we're gonna be just fine. It's just the sooner we can get a budget adopted, the better.
Yeah, sure, I'm, so, I'm playing agreement with that, it's, I've been busy. And on top of that, personnel's being pretty, pretty hectic.
Yeah.
And, well, recruit them, resolving issues, so, that have been brewing for a while, but, um, anyway, so with that, I would, um, answer any questions and ask you to consider that on, on the budget object. We did, Cindy, I had the forms ready to go for the AR, ARPO finally today, and Cindy, we asked Cindy to double check them for me, so I have that second set of eyes. So we expect probably, um, tomorrow.
I'm really glad, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm really glad that you're getting those, uh, documents in soon, because the ARPO, as you know, is the, uh, American rescue.
I said, I'm worried about ARPO, he's worried about it.
Everybody in the world's gonna be applying for that, so I think that the sooner that we get our application in, the better off we'll be for receiving the funding.
Well, that's a little squirrel today.
Yeah, I was always pleased to, to get your email on that. We may be getting some of it as soon as next week, May. May.
Did, did we tell council at one point, I remember, we sent an email, that one of the good news pieces about with the state of California is that we thought it was going to be administered through the house, Department of Health, who were notoriously slow.
Right.
However, it's actually been done through the Department of Finance, rather track that information down.
The Department of what?
Finance, which is a lot faster.
Yes, yes.
They know how to issue checks.
I hope.
In the right check.
So, so that is a good sign.
Exactly.
That's actually receiving the money.
I'm excited, it's like one point eight, it's like one point eight nine dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, one, yes.
One eight, not almost, almost.
Yeah, it's like.
Oh, okay.
It is awesome.
I was gonna correct it.
Yeah.
I can be sure we will spend it.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there's no worries there, um, there's lots, um, opportunities for us, but, but then that really works well, it's that they, um, will allow you um, to spend in infrastructure projects.
Right.
And I think with the highway three and the fact that the water project, we're emptying up, uh, two to three million out of our own dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's good timing.
Good timing on there.
Yeah, that would be.
Plus, it's already a federalized part, projects, so it's got all the overlays and all those things, so.
It is, it is complicated. I could get a lot of that information upfront, because I'm on the skateboard for the League of California Cities, and I forward everything to staff, I'm sort of, because it's, it's good that we get the information.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm getting it early, so.
All right, we have any questions from council? Of what?
Hmm, yes, I'll make the motion.
Uh, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would make the recommended motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure funds prior to the adoption of the fiscal year's uh, budget ending June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-two annual budget, and I'd like to put in there that we adopt the budget as soon as possible.
Councilman Middleton, I'll second.
I'll second, so, motion is second.
Mayor Pretender.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye.
Whatever.
Okay.
Thank you, man, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the next item, we're gonna bring down the, uh, party.
Okay.
Are you awake?
Yeah.
I said, are you awake, brother? Yeah.
I, I wanna thank you very nicely for it earlier.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. Glad to do it, I mean, it's just my professional, not, you know, have no vested interests, it's just the facts.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, so, Mayor, members of the council, so tonight, um, in addition to the other items we had on the agenda, um, I'm happy to say that we're another time critical, um, request, if you will. So, historically, we participated in strike teams for fires throughout the state for the last few years due to lack of personnel, we've kind of shied away from that, we stayed, stayed home, like last summer, we did standby for the Cal Fire Network, it was beneficial to us to get projects done, and also, you know, we, we did bring, uh, reimbursed money back for that, for that. In addition to that, occasionally fires or other emergencies fall under an O E S contract and not the assistance by hire contract. In fact, when we did the standby, there was a question as to which contractor applied, and that, uh, for Chief Anzo, he was forceful and said, no, we're using, we're, they're standing by for us, we're using the A V H contract, assistance by fire, so, it worked out really well. So in case that ever happens, um, and I was not familiar with a lot of these requirements, but we have to have a resolution from the governing body, which is you folks, so, um, so what happens is in the past, and inside learned from other chiefs, that said, make sure that you have portal to portal, um, condition in there, so that you can travel from here to San Diego, you get paid for that.
Right.
So that's very critical, and there, there were times that people didn't have a contract, maybe get paid, so that would be pretty sad, because that's, you know, people tired. You wanna get paid for your time, station, if you're home. So, um, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution before you, so that we can, uh, move forward, get this submitted by, uh, July one. Um, and if you see the rates on that resolution, those are actually the base rates, and fire chief is in there, I have no intention, whether unless there's something major going on, that I would ever leave the city to go on an strike team or something of that nature, or that would be.
Yes.
So, yeah, DJ and I have talked about that, but those rates are your base rates. Yeah, exactly, and that's what's happening. Take care.
I think she did kind of say that.
Yeah.
But those, those just reflect the base rate, so in essence, with the wording in there, it's actually, would be time and a half. That's what we're requesting, so, um, and like I said, portal, portal to portal is, was critical in this decision too, but we have it that way, if we, if we use it, and we may not, but if we use it, it's there.
That's there. That's what I'm saying. So, definitely need to have it. Is there any questions from council?
Yes.
No, no questions, I'll make the motion. Do I put the portal to portal in the motion?
Court one.
I wanted to know about the word.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's what I was just, just to say that right there.
Ported to portal, but we gotta put portal to portal in.
It's, it's in the resolution.
Oh, it's in the resolution.
Oh, it is, oh, yeah, yeah.
It's on the bottom paragraph of, of the first.
I thought it was that somewhere. Oh, okay, Council Middleton, I'll make the, um, uh, mo- motion to adopt the resolution approving the compensation rates for members of the Rireka Volunteer Party Department while on strike teams with the State of California Governor's Office of Emergency Services.
I'll second it.
All right.
Senator Baker.
Mayor Pretender.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye. Okay. Thanks, guys, thank you for your patience.
Leave a few engines behind for us, okay?
Absolutely, no, that's all.
Good job, guys.
Okay. Now we're off to number ten, so we did already know, so that's a possible action, uh, signatory author, authority of transfer, adopt a resolution to designate check signing authority to the city treasurer and city clerk. Reda.
Thank you, so Steve's leaving the check of the month club.
Yes.
There's a rumor that he is, yes.
Yeah, so, um, with that, we'd like to, um, include our ground with vacant transactions as well as, um, the, um, co-signer on checks, um, that you know, if you look at the checks, we have those signatures.
I don't know, what do you think?
I don't know. I always appreciate having that.
Of course.
I was kind of tempted, checks and balances, out there, and, um, it makes sense to include, um, the city clerk, I think, um, during this transition period, and then we have our, um, new permanent city manager, so we will.
Yeah, makes sense.
Anyway.
The text may name off, you know, pretty well, et cetera.
That's why we got to pay for your time.
I do have a question, why are you using specific names and not the positions?
I did, in the resolution, there's use of positions.
Oh, okay, it says, uh, city treasurer and city clerk.
Yep.
Okay, and the other question, if I may, sir?
Yes.
Uh, if you included the city manager, you could also state any to it anytime?
Uh.
Or is it a matter of?
The, the resolution at that time without the name, names, so we'll look at another one.
Oh.
The banks actually do need the same names.
Exactly, we have to bring that back to us.
They're, they're gonna look at it before I could, we can execute, it could be harder, I, if we're on it, before we could execute it, one of us will need to be on there, that's why it was kind of like plus one or two more on the count.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Not, then I'll make the motion. I'll make it.
Go ahead.
Let's get going. Make a motion, we adopt the resolution, does, does make check signing authority to the city treasurer and city clerk.
I must second the motion.
Mayor Pretender.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye. Alrighty, now it's the number eleven, which we know this is more of an informational thing, I think, at this point, instead of a, uh, action item, I, I, but we got it on there, it's action, so we still need to address it. Um, number eleven on the sound system of this, this, and.
What are we doing with that sound system?
Well, this was, info.
This was an item that was placed under the judgment by, um, customer, or, boy, it was not in the.
Yes.
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 That's a, that's another bid, though, isn't it?
Correct, so, yes, um, uh, I've been working with Reda on this, and so we got it from Network One, and you pack it is a, uh, bid from, uh, Twenty Second Avenue, these are just informal bids. Uh, you can see, uh, Jeremy Flynn from Twenty Second Avenue, um, in a project scope would be, um, air placement, uh, upgrade.
We only have Network One.
Didn't you pack it?
In the package.
Oh, it's on the package. Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, sorry.
Page seven hundred and forty-two.
Yeah, no, it's actually, if you go to, go to your computer.
The punchline on that one is, um, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
From Twenty Second Street?
Twenty Second Avenue, yeah.
Twenty Second Avenue, straight avenue.
And then, uh, Network One, uh, their estimate is around.
That's quite, is twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and one is two thousand one fifty-four?
Correct, so, the way that was explained to me is that, um, Network One is mostly I T solutions, um, they're looking at, you know, bumping up the wifi, maybe changing out the, um, the microphones or something like that. Twenty Second Avenue, they specialize in, um, audio visual, um, so he'd be looking at completely pulling out the sound system that we have already, and doing a full replacement, drilling through walls and, and patching, and things like that, so.
And here's the one, or they are the ones that, um, that provide the sound system for the city of weed, and they had no help.
Correct.
That's correct, and he did, he did come up and do, uh, some pro bono work for us as well.
He did, that, that didn't happen.
Well, I would like to point out that on this meeting tonight and on the, uh, previous council meeting, we have had presenters and speakers, and the council has been able to see them, their faces on the screen, been able to hear them, they've been able to hear you.
Yep.
Thank you. You've been able to get that.
You've been able to get that information with the system that we currently have.
Liz, can you hear us?
Well, I can run back there and unmute.
I'm the same, yes. You're in the same sign language right now.
So, Mayor, remember the council, unless there's, unless you have a recommendation at this point?
No, I would just point out that much like earlier tonight, you can also choose to take no action. That is an actual.
And I, I think at this point, it's something we need to review more and maybe even look into some other options even. And I mean, that's my opinion. I think, I think it's, especially when we have such a broad range going on here.
But it's, yeah, it's not apples and oranges. It's what I tease.
Exactly.
You said Russell Sprouts, is that what you said?
Oh, pumpkins, yes. So I, I don't know. What's, what's the, which is the council?
I have another question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Um, okay, Network One, are they already working with us?
They were not asked to do the audio.
Is Network One, they'll they change names?
We did run, we did run, we did after Studio Twenty-One, we did run a new cable back from here to get rid of the matter of Wi-Fi step that was being utilized on. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of when you get vendors, kind of, it would kind of overlap in some areas, it's a little complicated. But, um, and you can have really, your any state of the art sound system or, you know, an upgrade in your mics and the cabling.
Or a Band-Aid.
Or a Band-Aid, yeah.
A Band-Aid.
Fifteen hundred, twelve hundred dollar Band-Aid.
Which I think mics would make a big difference, period, all the way around, microphones. I think that's, I've been noticing that's been one of the biggest battles of everybody hearing is what's standing up there at the podium and them not being able to hear.
But they can't hear us either.
No, actually, we can hear pretty good on this. You'd be surprised. I just listened.
I have been on the other end of it, remember?
I was just, I just was listening to it last week too, so.
But I, but I mean, I've been on it when you guys were making motions and stuff, and it was really difficult to keep track of everybody who leaves.
Well, I think, like I said, they, they helped it out a little bit lately by getting stuff filled, and so.
We've been trying, yes. We can change out microphones. Reda and I were looking at having a stand mic with a clip that would connect to the podium. Would the council be interested in, in wearing lapel microphones?
Ready to go.
Ones on the desk.
That's something to think about, too.
You know, that's what we used back in my college theater days.
Yeah.
Be sitting just as close as you are now and still picking.
It just said your internet connection is unstable.
That is a different issue than audio visual.
Good to know. Good to know.
So.
So, yeah, I guess at this point, we.
I'm not sure that we need to.
I think it needs to.
I think it does. I think there's a couple of things that you need to, to look at. Lapel mics would pick you up better. I will tell you that we, what did we have? We have lapel mics.
Well, since we've been here, Debbie.
We had a few of them. You're right.
The only time I remember doing it is when we had a meeting offsite, which is down at the theater.
The most difficult part is when you stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
And your mic falls off.
Well, or you don't make it all the way up, yes. And so, so what, so there's some, so that would, that would help out. I think probably what there needs to be is sort of like, I think you suggested discussion. I think there needs to be discussions. What is it that you're trying to achieve for? How extensive of changes are you willing to make? I mean, the sound system has been here for quite a while. I'm not a sound guy, and also I'm clueless. But I do know that, you know, sound systems are a time you need to be updated or replaced.
Small building.
But those are, those are more expensive. And then one other thing that I'll just mention passing, because I remember it and it might get forgotten, is that there has been a discussion about putting a speaker outside. Now, so that people, during overflow situations, people can hear what's going on. There's one big gigantic issue with speakers that are not inside the building. And that is closed session, making sure that it is off, very closed session, like anyway. So.
Often unplug.
It's, it's really, it becomes a real issue. I've had this before, because I walked into the middle of, of a closed session that I was not part of and flipped off the switch and walked out of the meeting, so.
Because you could hear it, right?
Plus, I could hear it in my office.
Well, that's why, that's why many councils have closed sessions in different locations.
Right. Yeah. We could have it in the city manager or the city council conference room.
Yeah, right. So that you build one. That will be right next to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and each lapel microphone would need to be turned off as well.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Okay, so more, more work.
Yeah, so we'll just have to bring it back and have a future discussion on that.
Yes, more research.
There's a lot to mention.
There's too much to it that we don't want to make a decision right now.
That's a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are here for your research.
All righty. No action taken on that one. So now we are off to number 12. Special possible action, the interim city manager authorization, the mayor to enter into a retired and new intent employment agreement for interim city manager with Randy L. Jackson.
Sorry, Randy, he was tired.
Randy's not on the, on the, the.
Zoom.
Given that it was the end of what I knew was going to be.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't want to keep.
I didn't want to have it hanging on, because I, I think it's better that we think that we got done.
We'll be caring about him.
Anyway.
And it's signed, yeah.
Yeah.
So I was tasked with, with making minor changes to the agreement that had been reviewed. We did make those minor changes.
Yes.
Randy and I talked about it in, in the recent agreement. And he is ready to sign it. He is still interested in housing. That's, that's still an issue for him. But what I would encourage you to do is to approve this, this agreement tonight. I think you all know a lot about it, because we talked about things in general before when you were selecting closed session. However, I am willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Took a questions from the council. Did you, everybody review this?
Yes.
Yes.
Ad nauseam. I mean, yes, I did. Um, yeah, if, does he, do I have any questions?
No.
Nobody has any questions? Put my hand. I'd like to make.
Okay, make a motion.
Okay, I have a lot of time investors.
Yes, it is.
I would like to make a recommended motion with the city council.
Sorry.
That the city council authorized the mayor to enter into a retired, a new attempt employment agreement for interim city manager with Randy L. Johnson.
And I'll second it.
Mayor for town, Mayor.
Hi.
City Council member Freeman.
Hi.
City Council member Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor Kay.
Hi.
McCray option. Moving on to staff reports, we're not going to go into great detail except for the things that we have out here this evening. The first up is a a report from the planning division. And this is really an update on, to the grants that we've received. And if you want, I can have Liz go into brief detail.
Is Liz awake?
Yes, Liz is awake. I'm sure Liz is, is awake, yes. Or you can read it for, for yourselves, but what we're really doing is we're, we've made some progress on both of these grants. There are some changes that we'll have to make to one of them, for example, the affordable housing project on foot, you know, above, I can never remember the cross street, but above the Y. One of the things we're looking at spending some money on, we've had another way to do that project administratively. And those people have applied for funding and they're still, they're right now in line for trying to get a tax credit.
It's a nonprofit, right?
It's a nonprofit, yes. I can never remember the name of it, because it's got initials that look like a really nonprofit.
And it's alternative housing. It's not necessarily homeless. It's homelessness and people that are, uh, uh.
At risk.
Well, there's, there's a transitional portion of it. Where you're moving people that have, are graduating essentially out of, out of, out of homelessness there. But it also has a component that is just regular low income housing, like what we see on all the tax credit. So anyway, we were going to go through and study how to make that happen. We found a way to make that happen without having to do the study. So we're going to work on reallocating those funds to some other eligible activities. So.
I like that it's called a LEAP grant, so people can LEAP out of poverty.
It's a lot better than some of the other acronyms I've seen.
Yeah.
So, so if, unless there are questions?
Good job, Stephen, Liz. I think you've been a two vision worker.
Yeah, I, I have to give a lot of credit to, to Liz, so.
Thank you, Liz.
I basically say, all right.
Another quick note, if I may?
Yes.
We're going to have this on the planning commission meeting tomorrow night. I'll see Cory there, I know. Detail, they're going to go into detail of an overview on the LEAP grant and the changes we're going to need to make to our general plan for the housing element. So if you have time, come to our planning commission tomorrow night. If not, I've got a PowerPoint that I'm happy to share.
Six thirty here?
You bet.
So if there's more than three of us, what happens?
Actually, your, your audience.
You can be an audience, we probably should not participate.
I was gonna say, no worries.
There we go. Okay.
I'm not going.
You got a packet.
They're, they're making a joke. I got a packet. I was wondering why I had two packets.
This is just an update. We don't have to take any action, right?
Correct.
It's just that.
Staff's report.
Well, there isn't anything in here that talks about an action, so I think this was information only.
I just want to make sure that I didn't blow it up. The next item is Greenhorn Bridge. This was also something with Reda, but council member Ford. And we put it on as a brief report.
Yes.
Number one, there's a lot to figure out what we need to do. Secondly, this is a new project. And so we really kind of, we all the way through, but by the time I get that saying stuff down, we can argue a real start.
There is.
So as we've asked, Ben, and the main decision to go up to Lower Greenhorn on Stow, I take a look at the existing pedestrian walk bridge. And it looks like we can fix it in-house.
Good.
The decking material, we got a quote on it. I wasn't exactly, wasn't exactly what I was looking for, for the material itself. It is an M C Q, micronized copper treated, but I wanted to see if we could match it to the big bridge on the Stow way. And which is M C Q treated southern yellow pine, which is pretty hard to get right now. So we're waiting on another quote back to see what the shipping cost would be. So really, we're talking about five thousand dollars with a lumber, maybe five to six thousand dollars with extras, labor, hardware, or something like that. So.
Is that?
Councilman Ford asked how much it would be to replace the bridge. I was initially thinking, okay, are we going to put in a big bridge that Park Master Plan has in it or not? That's two hundred thousand dollar project. So I think we can fix it around ten, twelve thousand. And then there's the, the, the only caveat to that is that we need to talk to Jenae at Fish Wildlife and have it add it to the permit. We are working on it. To ask her how we would, because we're getting so close on that one, to see how we can slip it in as an addendum or, or as a different permit. So I'll come back to you with that answer, just as ten to twelve grand, rough ballpark, to make it a walkable, nice bridge deck.
Yes.
I just have a question about that bridge, and I haven't been over it. And I usually walk around, we're up on the hills, that's, I know that's down below the dam. Isn't that mainly, isn't that a metal bridge?
It's a metal bridge with a wood deck on top.
Oh.
So.
The worst part is the part you have to replace.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like the metal isn't good enough.
That's kind of what I thought.
Well, I, I, yeah, I just didn't want to get into the bridge buttons, that kind of thing. So then we're talking engineering costs.
And truthfully, because it's already different from the other bridge, the cosmetics of the wood matching doesn't bother me at all.
At all. Yeah, the difference.
Strong, safe.
Strong and safe. We'll work on that.
And if it saves money.
Yeah.
And I will not be able to provide the services walking on up.
We're gonna, we're gonna let Alder do that.
Yeah.
I've had that duty before. The next thing, yeah, liquor licenses.
Yes. We got two coming down.
Liquor licenses. Did you see, you're still here.
All right, I'll make a really quick meeting, so. The Dollar General is applying for liquor license, but we're over our limit. And so they have a request for one. We're already one over the limit for the zip code seven oh two. We're allowed seven. We have eight. Generally, liquor license, someone I reviewed, sign over there. How with this one, we have to do the actual business profession code requests a resolution from the city for me to write. Why is this going to help RIRICA? It's going to make it easier for citizens. So the guy's been very patient. The long story is, this started prior to me. And I never got back to him, Eric, and stuff. It's got a ninety day window. It sat for probably thirty weeks before it got to me. I happened to slip off his notes, called him. He was very thankful. I always called him. He's willing to talk. If anyone wants to talk, he sent me a PowerPoint. Real quick, they don't sell singles. They're only open from seven in the morning till eleven at night. And alcohol is less than five percent at the store, and it's only a beer of wine, less than twenty lesses, so.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and she. So you say we have eight liquor licenses out there. Are they all being actively used? Because I think that the purple plum needs to have more than they're not even helping.
So we have several different levels of liquor license. Liquor license twenty that he's applying for, and twenty-one are all sales at the grocery store and gas station. We have fourteen, once suspended, we have fourteen town. But it goes by your zip code code. So he's at seven point zero two, which is at North End. And he has seven point zero one, seven point zero zero, so fourteen are scattered along by RIRICA from South and Town. We have eight in this section of North End, which would be the gas station, truck stop. And then you also have the other liquor licenses. So the concern with this is we have to show a reason why this is beneficial to him and beneficial to public. If we're going over our limit, the reason I'm so comfortable doing it on my own dot com and all of you is, what do we do if we get a second truck stop? They want to sell it. And we do, we get the.
This is a job that I need.
That's true.
So who's this? Are you allowed to say who's this person?
Sure. So his name is Steve Rollins. And he is, I don't know what his title is, but he's for Dollar General, Southern California. So super nice guy. He gave me a PowerPoint, PowerPoint, because he's not really helpful to work stuff. But I think what we should do, you know, this is what I'm asking, is for you guys to decide if this is law enforcement wise to me, I it's not going to change my crack rate to have someone, you know, buy a six pack of beer in the long line. But it could affect the city RIRICA's form of expression or turning someone down in the future with a sandell's guide. We may have turned someone down prior to least happened, and I'm not even there. So I just thought so much to bring yous, you guys.
Chief, do we, we, do we know that the other Dollar Generals, do they have liquor license, all of the other ones?
Yes, so I pulled up his, his name and stores to make sure that they weren't violating the Delaware laws. I, there was a mess. There were like twenty of them or more, right?
That already have.
Just going through. And they had two that were like withdrawn, one, it's just they got second, different license. I didn't see anything that stood out.
Okay.
I did do my research and read all the business profession codes for you to make sure that's what it says. And business profession code is on the back of this, if you were in the RIRICA. But it basically says right on there that this is just a request for. He hasn't got it. I'm not giving him a license. This is a request for A B C, who I've already contacted, I've called A B C twice or this and talked to him, and he read it. This is a request for him to give to A B C, for them to decide to give him a license, which then we'd have to sign off on that also. So per the business profession codes, since we're over the limit, we have to get either a resolution or we, or as a group, we have to write how this helps the business and helps the city. So that's what I'm bringing to you.
Yes.
That's for on that. And as far as law enforcement wise, I'm okay. I, I think it's a bigger issue than that. So I just want to point out a couple of, of things. One is that Resolution twenty-two eighty-nine, which was passed in September of ninety-nine, gives the police chief the authority to make determinations of public convenience and necessity for the issuance of liquor licenses. So this resolution. So this resolution could give him the power to do that. I think it's wise, though, that we're having this conversation. I guess what I would like to point out is that because of the type of town that we are with the tourism and now the truck stops and the gas stations that provide a lot of our sales tax. And those typically do have alcohol as part of what they normally put in a convenience store, that that's probably the reason why we're hitting these caps within the city. The other thing, and this is more anecdotal, including from, I understand is that people who went to Oregon colleges actually drive down to Siskiyou County to buy alcohol because it's so much cheaper down here. I just imagine, because I understand this, I'm including. Now, granted, this is people my age, so this was a long time ago, but I'm including people that had runs from Corvallis and G as well as Ashland. They were remain nameless. But, but that is probably another reason why we have so many liquor storage within our area. Because if you think about it, it's not just within the city limits, but immediately south, there's no reason for a liquor store.
In hills, there would no go north. There's no reason for a liquor store in hills.
Yeah, so I think that those are college students. So I guess the question for, for you, and this is not a formal action, but is are you okay with the chief going ahead and increasing this? Do you want more of a report to you and where you adopt a resolution? Which would mean if there was another request, we'd have to bring that back. It's really more about letting you know, I think when we, and this is kind of the chief, and we have a cap like that, it's appropriate to come back and talk about community standards. But I agree with the chief. I think that there's certainly not a law enforcement need for that, to be concerned about it. I think you can understand why. And I'm looking at it being a, a town where it's no longer five of our top ten sales tax producers and gas stations, but something really close to that. And a lot of that, some of that's from the C stores. And they just, they sell it very nice.
Yeah, like I said, as far as the law enforcement side, I don't see where it's gonna affect either way. In fact, it's, if anything, it's the other way because they're not selling individuals or selling you know, six packs or whatever, which is usually more people that are doing it to grabbing it for the, for the whole weekend or, or whatever, not just to grab an individual and take it down the road and drink it as they're driving. Generally.
So are you cool with him just going ahead?
Yeah, I, I am.
Decision and then we'll use this unless ABC gets.
Right.
Requires more paperwork, I'll just say that. Liz sent it to me. It's like, she can make this printer.
I know. Chief, do you want to announce that you got an officer coming tomorrow and what time that is?
Yeah, tomorrow nine o'clock we'll be hiring Tyler Bertolucci. We'll be swearing him in. He's gonna be capable of campaigning tomorrow. We're excited about that. He'll be the first person I'm sworn in, so that's. We've got another one in backgrounds that's real close also. We got another one. It's just ours. We don't know whether that. Animal Control Officer should be finishing background sometime this week. Trying to get bodies on the street. We've got a push going for the reserves like we talked about. I've got some interest from the young. So I'm sure you have some interest in that.
It looks like hopefully we can get. Yeah. Now, where is this? Bertolucci's? I've sent Bertolucci. Bertolucci, where is he? If you don't want to, is he coming from this area or where's he from?
He is local.
Good.
He's lived in South County. He's local and he's gonna work out real good.
Is he fresh out of the academy or does he have some experience?
Nope, he's gonna be an academy graduate, no experience. So it's gonna be a full FTO. He's just in summer, always on the street.
We got another body.
Many laterals on, on, we need to list that.
One step at a time. That's good.
That's the start.
Thanks, Chief.
I'm gonna let staff members show up if they got a report.
Yes, I wanted to address the resolution for the Urban Water Management Plan. Grant Maxwell is a consummate professional. So he emailed me the, the correction. So that line on the second paragraph of the resolution, current requirements are that urban water suppliers repair water conservation plans that will produce a ten percent per capita water savings by twenty fifteen. And then twenty percent for capital water savings by twenty twenty. Yes, that's the dangers of the find and replace in.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Yes, and thank you for catching that.
I don't think you mean that.
Future me will beg you when it is correct. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have anything else to add? I'm tired of the end. We're gonna get a weed boy. Just some things. I think Steve sent you the pictures, the fire break, fire line. So thank you guys for proving that.
When did that happen?
They sent pictures.
He's very pretty.
They got emails.
Get your emails.
It might have been another Joe I sent. While you're searching.
She's mad she didn't get the email with it.
News, you can check on Pierce Manufacturing on the link. The water tender is pretty near done. Tim and I, Tim Shaw, the thing manager, we're leaving Florida bound here for about ten days, fourteen days. Yeah, my inspection, which is very important, but it's two days of traveling, one day there and so.
So when do, when do you see to have it using?
Probably, I mean, by the time they, there may be changes they have to make if we find problems, which sometimes does happen. Then they'll drive it out empty to Sacramento and then we have to get them the radio to install it. Tim's got plans to go down. So that gets installed and they'll bring it up.
That'll be a good time.
And all that. So just to bring it by, make it a point to show you all the. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be busy. It's gonna be.
Awesome.
That's why we did it. And I have one more thing.
Thank you. Thank you for recruiting more individuals.
Yeah, thanks, Chief.
I don't, I don't think we heard you. Sorry.
I, I did, okay.
Oh.
Thank you, brother. Awesome. I was just gonna say the CDVG grant.
What about the trigger? Thank you.
Same with the courthouse development.
Crisis diverted.
Good.
I saw the courthouse development fees. I missed the dozer.
That's, that's for us.
Okay, so now go to council room for it. Don, since you're, since you're talking, go for it.
Okay, you asked for it. Commission.
Thank you.
And I wanted to congratulate all the graduates, YR High School graduation. Anyway, and, oh, and today we had Northern California Division, Tacoma Valley Division, fifty-seven Northern Cities. Anyway, we had the board meeting yesterday and thank you, Debbie, for answering the questions. We had quite a lengthy discussion on Laffco funding and how other cities are handling it. But we also, at the end of the meeting, had a lengthy discussion about fireworks. And it was interesting that it was divided about fifty-fifty, who was doing them and who was, who were not doing it. But the main thing that I took off of the ones that were doing it is that they were, they were finding people that they were catching. A thousand dollars for the first fine, five thousand for the second, ten thousand for the third.
Good.
And the little city of, is it Oakhurst? Live Oak, thank you for remembering, Chief. I told him yesterday, the little city of Live Oak, their council member was on and they caught ten people last year. They made ten thousand dollars. And that's a little tiny county. So anyway, that was, I, I thought that was really, really interesting. Not a lot else that was on there. But today, just so that you all know, you know, one of my projects is the YR Monique. It's YR Monique, YMCA and Stage partnership on best swim program. It started today. So they picked the kids up at the YMCA at one fifty-seven, took them over to Monique and they swam over there until about four thirty and then they brought them back to the Y. All the kids safely reported back to the Y and back to their parents. How many? No, I, I had a caller to turn, did you remember?
How many?
Thirty enrolled and eight ten weight.
There's thirty kids enrolled. It was kind of jelly today, so I'm not sure how many went. Ta-da, that's my crowning words. I'm very proud of that little program to make something for our kids.
Something to keep the kids busy in a positive way, for sure. It's Milton.
I don't have anything, so I'm gonna pass it on to somebody else.
You are boring.
I'm boring.
No, he's not. That's a good.
I'll, I'll save it up for a couple more weeks.
Mine is very brief. Number one, the museum submitting their letter of interest to provide tourist services. Just promised me to ask for a workshop for the duties that we need to pick up on.
So what does that look like? We need to workshop. We got one Thursday, so we can't obviously.
That was on homeless.
That's on homeless. Yeah, so that's a reminder for everybody.
I've got people coming. Everybody's taking a closer look at homelessness.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's what we want. So anyways, this workshop, I, I agree with you, Debbie. We should. Do we need to, we want to start thinking about timeframe on that? Because we do need to figure this out because we're gonna get behind and the next thing you know, we're going to be in our holiday seasons as far as that goes and we're gonna be frustrated because we don't have nothing resolved.
Well, if I ruled the world, I'd have it the end of next month.
We ought to skip.
End of July?
Really?
The workshop, the end of July?
Maybe the end of August.
So the tourism be done?
No, not with that.
Oh, okay.
For the workshop to get all the events planned. Want to do business development, who's taking the responsibility of the tourist physical location, that kind of thing. We have some of the special events coming up. The parade and stuff and I don't want to wait a month beforehand.
We just blew right by one Thursday's on.
Yeah, that's an unfortunate thing too. A lot of other cities now are having events and putting on good events too. We're missing out on that. So.
We want to get it together, so.
We got a resume from a Steve Baker for an event coordinator.
Steve Baker will be in charge.
Yes, he is.
Anyways, we said July, so what do we want? So we have our next, our city council meetings in July are the sixth and the twentieth. Sometimes I have a workshop to the Tuesday or the Wednesday. So we want to skip a week because we're still not knowing where we're going to be with the homeless meetings at that point.
Well, we're getting it narrowed down though, so.
We definitely get it narrowed down, but.
That's the seventeenth, it's homelessness.
How about the thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
July.
July thirteenth.
Lucky thirteen, lucky number.
Does that work?
I don't think I'm forgetting anything.
So I just want to point out the. Homeless, homeless meeting on July first. On July sixth, and that's when Randy's going to arrive.
Right.
There's almost meeting on the fifteenth.
Well, we think, you know, we have, we're saying that now, but we're not, we're sure until we, you know.
Do you want to have a little report?
And then, so you put out Thursday, so two meetings that week, but that would be the off week before the twentieth.
Yeah.
Which one?
Tuesday, the thirteenth. But I don't remember the problems with Tuesday.
She's saying that.
Yes. No, later, not the second Tuesday, though. My. Yeah, I have Collier. And the third Wednesday I have something. And the second Tuesday is Laffco, but it's two thirty.
When is yours?
Yours is the Transportation Commission on the same Tuesday. I have Laffco.
The second Tuesday.
Yes, the thirteenth. But we're done by six thirty. Yeah, but.
It is on Wednesday, yeah. The fourteenth. What's, what's Wednesday?
At six. I mean, as long as you have it during the afternoon.
The fourteenth works too. How about the fourteenth?
So I forgot to tell you that the first in-person state League of California Cities, CalCities meeting is going to be that, that week in person.
How about the twelfth? A Monday night?
Twelve works for me.
Okay.
Okay, so twelve on the events part of that.
Do you want to start it earlier, like five thirty? What do you want?
I know from a staff level, we appreciate the early, early special meetings that you have because then we don't have to bring people on overtime.
All the overtime that we're producing, especially all these meetings we've been doing.
We, we appreciate that.
No, and I agree. I'd say, what, five o'clock? I don't know. Four is a little early, but.
Five's fine.
Five o'clock then.
Four is better.
And this will be discussion of events and proceeding forward with our tourism and events, basically be a combination, correct?
Business development events, blah, blah, blah. And that's the twelfth at five.
Twelve to five, okay. Great.
Events, tourism and business services is what I put down.
Perfect.
Would you say you call it events, what, business services?
Events, tourism and business services. That's been our catch-all. And of course, we so far have had proposals from the Chamber of Commerce. Which I do not believe we have set out to. We talked to that because they called you. Chamber of Commerce, the museum. Foundation, Friends of the.
It's Friends of the Siskiyou County Museum.
Awesome.
No, it's awesome. Oh, I see.
And then also, uh, we need to see.
Could we have copies of those? Again, sent out in time for them.
They made, they made a revision. I can't remember if you've actually. So one of the events that the Chamber wanted to include is the fourth of July. That was something that, that I don't have a direct picture to assess, actually any of these by. But I know that in the past, the council policy was to try to not deal with the Fourth of July, both for funding reasons as well as liability reasons, but mostly funding. So we might need to let the Chamber of Commerce know that that part of their proposal probably is not going anywhere.
So the, the part of the proposal is like, right now, it's kind of like, we can't do that. We want to do it right now.
Just, what I'm looking at is, is communication. I'm not looking for you to make an error. I'm just saying that we need to communicate with these people who in the past have been our partners or else in the future they need their partners.
Yes. So they called the Star Spangled Siskiyou is what they're calling it, Special Events. Sparked, they wanted to Star Spangled Siskiyou Citizen of the Year in twenty twenty-one, the fall of twenty twenty-one. Holiday Parade, which they have as December, which that's. Holiday Night of Lights, which is in December. So they have, that's the four events they want to, as the chain wants to do. But that'll be up for discussion. I just thought I'd bring.
Yeah, probably, probably even, but what we could do is send you out the, either their latest version or Arthur. May get a revised version, but, but we'll let them know that that's when we're looking at, so July twelfth at five. At five. We talking about that generally.
Yeah, cause they had a substantial amount of funding that they're asking for too. So.
Is that sent to everybody? If not, could you please send it to everybody?
We, we could send that out.
I think it is.
It was something that we were looking considering when we could get it out to everyone. And we did some work and we realized there wasn't a way to get it done in time. So I didn't, didn't go out, but because there was discussion with.
Which I'm glad we didn't put this on this.
Oh, that's a disaster.
Already here at ten o'clock and it's like.
But it does need to get done. So that's what we're working on. Arthur, any other questions that you have at this point in this discussion or?
No, I, I won't turn on the clock. So.
We will sign you up for it. Yeah.
Not for me.
We may have to get back to you on that.
Yeah. Right.
And, and by we, I mean.
Yeah.
Not you.
Somebody, somebody's getting back to us.
Someone will get back to you.
Unless you're letting that mouse lose its jab in your pocket, it's not you.
So I have a question before we adjourn. So the discussion, uh, with the rental person, did that, did they not connect?
I provided the email to, for Joan to forward on to him. You said, thank, you said, thank you. You received it.
Did everybody not get it?
I, I sent the email and copied everybody. I did.
Oh.
Then you said, thank you, cause I said Joan or Dwayne, can you?
I remember seeing that, but.
But I gave.
So is the whole effort didn't get to Randy? Uh-oh.
I, I, I.
You didn't get it?
I don't know.
Shoot.
So just send that out to him.
Yeah, if that, if that's already spread away, that's right.
That's fine.
I said, can you please forward this on to Randy?
What it said basically, you can tell him what it said. Basically said that she wanted to meet with him and have him look at it and then they can.
Discuss terms.
Well, he, he said that.
Pretty much. But it has, has a website so she, he can look at the property, her phone, her name and phone number.
And it was cute as could be.
Isn't it nice? That'd be a perfect situation.
Don't worry.
If you wanna adjourn to it.
Yes, that's how I was just gonna say.
Oh, my God. I'm packing up to go.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to. There's nothing there. So, okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you for sticking with us.